Okay, everybody, my clock on the wall or on my, on the dais says it's 6 o'clock, so I'll call a meeting, special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please call the role, Viviana?
Yes, ma'am. Debbie Moore?
Here.
Patrick Connell?
Here.
Cheryl Lee?
Here.
Sue Ann Frugé?
Here.
Richard Gartman?
Here.
Diana Rose?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
And Alyssa Halli-Schram, let us know that she would not be able to make it, most likely.
At our last regular meeting, we got through a good chunk of the proposed draft changes to our subdivision ordinance. Where did Wesley go? Did he leave? I remember there were a couple of things where you said that Wes had made some comments and they weren't necessarily included, and I'd like, we said at that time that we'd like to hear from him, and I would like to know if any of the commission members have anything that they would like to bring up from, to revisit from our last, our last meeting.
I don't have anything specific, but I just wanted to let everybody know who's watching at home on Facebook Live, that there's a link to the packet we're going through on, in the comments, right? Yeah, in the comments, so you can click that and access that.
Thank you. I would like to offer some relief, I think, to the elephant that we're trying to eat. I mean, you know, when, when we were handed this packet of 150, how many pages?
157.
157 pages, it was like, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So I have some requests, and I think we'll make it easier for the commission and also for citizens when they want to start working with this. And one of them would be to do an executive summary, like maybe a five-page summary, with citations and footnotes to direct us to points in the document that are major changes or improvements, and the comments on them, like the, I think someone mentioned the cul-de-sacs on why cul-de-sacs were not desirable, which makes absolute sense, but to an average citizen, they will not have a clue. And the other thing is, I discovered that, I think we were all a bit intimidated by the enormity of this, and it was, since it's a workshop, being seated this way, we cannot have dialogue. So what is the possibility of us adjourning to the conference table so we can actually have dialogue? And Colin says that it will be, you can manage it, so that we can actually work on this and pose questions and be comfortable with it. Is that a possibility? How is it posted for today? As a special meeting?
Just in its room, so it doesn't matter where you are. I guess, clear questions, if you might. So we had a quick discussion about that. I have a complaint that I would speak at the end of the table and take our audience to your room. I could issue amputations through the House sound system. I don't have resources to do that. What we do is move your station to the TV, it might be five, ten minutes, look around. What's your?
Well, is there any interest in doing that? How does the commission feel? Do you want to continue the way we did last meeting? Or go to the big table?
Does it require a motion?
I'd just like to hear.
Like to hear discussion from other members if they have any comments.
I'm fine either way.
I'm sorry?
He's fine either way.
Either way? Okay.
Yeah, me too. Either way is fine with me.
So I would say, since we don't have any citizens present at the meeting, and so I, I think, sitting down, a little more informal at the table, so everybody can look at each other, we'll be fine. We don't have anybody else in here except us right now, so.
Matt? We'll take a five, 10-minute, 10-minute recess and move to the, the big table. Yes? All right. This is the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, March 6, 2018. We have come down from the dais to sit around the table so that we can have more of a dialogue and, and discussion about the, the changes to, the proposed changes to our subdivision ordinance. We all feel that this is one of the major things that's going to affect Bassdrop for many, many years to come. We congratulate Dave and the staff for all of their hard work in putting this document together, and we also want to make sure that we, we digest this and we're able to get citizen input, builders' input, and take as long as it takes to get the document that we think will be a very important part of Bassdrop's future. So, Patrick?
Just a reminder, so with the change, we can't, we're not gonna be able to put the document we're reviewing up live on the video, but there is a link inside the comments that will link to this document, so you can review it with us, or look through it now, or later, or whenever.
Okay.
So.
All right. So.
Now, with that, I'm gonna tell you, the document here is slightly different than what we should do.
No kidding.
Because it's always a moving toilet.
It's a living document.
Oh, no.
One of which is, though, that the city attorney was to review the whole ordinance.
Right.
And up until last time we met, he'd only reviewed the first third.
Right.
Which was the legal part, which is the part I really wanted to look at. Well, yesterday I got his comments on the last two-thirds, so I have all of his comments, and I've tried to address them here as well. I did make a few changes, discussed last time, so let me go real quickly through some of that, and then where we left off was starting these in the section, and I don't think it's gonna take near as long as it did last time, so.
Okay.
Hold me to that.
But we do want to hear from Wes, why he made some of the comments that he did.
Sure, sure. And he did some of the research that we had asked him to do.
Okay.
And he can address that. Anyway, so starting at the beginning. So, the first thing, up toward the front, we had a prohibition about selling lots that were illegally subdivided. I have modified that slightly to say that you can't subdivide it and then sell the illegal parts, and it kind of, it makes it a little softer on someone who may have bought an illegally subdivided lot. Now, that still causes some problems down the road, but it kind of lifts that kind of onus off the buyer.
Everybody understand, cool with that? Okay. Because if you're not, now's your chance to hold up your hand and say, "I got a question." Why'd you do that?
I want to reiterate, but what we're trying to do is to get away from other record and try to get everything in the city to be applied at lots, because there's a lot of benefits to having applied lots in terms of how the records are kept and make sure that all of the services are provided. I made a few comments in here. We still, within the part dedication portion, have some references to fees. Those really should be moved to the fee ordinance, and so I'll try to work on getting that moved over. There's a couple of situations. I'm still going through and catching some of the 100-year, 100-year, and if I explain to you all, you know, there's two tons, and you really need to write in a number twice. Write it out in letters and then write it in numerals. One is in an ordinance, and one is when you're writing a check. So, if you think about it, you're writing a check, that's what you do. Contracts, anytime you deal with money, you always write it twice, and that's because you won't have a check. Number, the, the, the letters always are given more weight than the numbers, so if there's a discrepancy between the two, we look at what's actually written out. Some more stuff that really ought to go to the fee ordinance.
Getting dizzy.
You're reading all this as I'm.
Absolutely. I thought while you were memorizing this.
Now, that's Microsoft trying to tell me that that word doesn't exist, and I recognize that exists. I can just go through and add it to the.
Microsoft loves engineering terms, also.
And Microsoft likes to format things that don't match. Sarah just texted me and said, "You need to put a mic on."
We don't have one.
Just move that closer.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be in charge of the rotating of the mic. Raise your hand.
This is, I'm just taking out some legalese. Still saying addition thereto, just say in addition what we're talking about. So my students don't like me reviewing their work either, because I tend to mark it up. I added this primarily at Jennifer's request, and it's, how long is an application valid? You know, if someone turns in an application, you can't necessarily just keep it forever. So we've added a provision that if, if an application comes in, and remember that by law, we're required to act on a plat within 30 days. So if someone, something's been laying around for six months, that means they haven't given us a complete application. We're waiting on something from them. So what we've done is, I've added that if it's more than six months, or 90 days after the most recent submittal, we can wipe the slate clean and, and kind of move on. This is not a, a change so much as a reordering. Question came up about the requirements for a sketch plat may seem kind of onerous for someone who's just doing a simple, you know, a lot of record type to a, a plat. So we had this paragraph already that said, "Come in and talk to us, and we'll tell you what you need to have," but it was after we talked about everything that you needed to have. So I moved that up front to say, "Come talk to us, we'll tell you what you need," and then, for example, the conceptual site drainage plan may not be applicable in some cases, or the requirement to be in digital format may not be applicable in some cases. So it's just tried a way of simplifying the process for simple cases, essentially.
Do we, does the office have, like, an example? Like, if a citizen were to come in and say, "I hear what you're saying, but do you have something to show me?" Do we have something that's basic that we could say, like, "This is an example of..."
Well, I mean, we have.
Not necessarily true in the ordinance, but just as something to have in the office.
Yeah, I mean, a, a simple one-lot plat would be a, a good example.
Right.
We could have something like that. And that's where we took that paragraph. And I apologize for the pagination, because Microsoft does that when you edit it. See how fast we're going? I wish I could, I wish I could say it would be like this the whole way. But, but remember what I did, we've been through all this, and I accepted all those changes, so I'm only showing you what's changed. A question came up, why don't we show the 500-year flood?
Right.
So, on a preliminary plat, there's nothing that, I mean, it's fairly easy to get the 500-year flood off the FEMA document, so I added that to show the 100-year and the 500-year as shown on the current flood insurance map. Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna regulate the 500-year flood, and I'll get to that a little further on. Location of the floodway, the 100-year flood and the 500-year flood. Sorry, who else listening to you guys?
Jennifer did a good note. I was just thinking.
And somebody took really great notes.
She took good notes of y'all, and she also had her own notes.
Well, that's good.
Hence the dormant application.
This is a provision that, actually, the county already requires this, but it wasn't clearly spelled out in our requirements. Anytime the 100-year floodplain touches your lot, even though your house is outside that, we want them to put the minimum finished floor elevation on that lot, because we want to make sure that they don't, you know, if the flood elevation is at 100 and somebody builds our house at 100.5, or six inches above the flood, we know that when the 500-year flood comes, they're gonna get water in it. So we want to make sure that they show the, the two-foot above adjacent to that. We actually talk about a distance outward that they have to address, but that's where that comes in.
It helps account for any deviations between the flood map and the actual condition, so it gives you a little bit more of a safety factor.
So, so, so do we require people to build one foot above, period?
It's actually two feet above the 100-year base flood elevation, but what Dave's added is, even though you're, if you're not building inside the 100-year.
Right.
Floodplain, if you're within 100 feet of the 100-year floodplain, you still have to build it, is it one foot?
Yeah. Because if you're, I think if your lot's 50% or more, you'll still have to have flood insurance of the lender anyway.
That depends on the lender.
Sometimes it's.
I've never met the one that didn't, but, but yeah.
Well, but some lenders, if it touches any part of your lot.
That's true, too.
You know, only a few percent, they still require, so.
Right.
And so what we added up there was a requirement that we acknowledge that and show the finished floor elevation. Okay, question came up about irrevocable letters of credit, and I mentioned to you that the attorney didn't like them, and we had that question to y'all, and you said, "Take them out," and so we have taken it out. Just remember, a letter of credit is only as good as the bank that it's drawn upon, and I told you the story that I had a letter of credit on one of the savings and loans that went bankrupt in the 80s, which meant the letter of credit was worthless. So the question came up about, if the work's not done, by the end that the bond expires, what do you do? And so this is just a, a provision that says that you've got to provide us an additional bond, or do something so that we know that the work gets done, but that we will request, we will notify the bond issuer that, hey, if it doesn't get done, we're gonna collect on the bond. So it's just kind of a trigger to let either the developer know to get down, or the bonding company know that we want it to get it done, so.
How does it?
So you're giving them a 30-day notice that, you know, the bond's about to expire, so it's either finish up or give us a new bond.
Right.
Okay. Is 30 days enough to get another?
And typically, what happens is, the bond company gets on the developer to get it done, or the bond company actually will usually hire their own developer.
Because of the.
They really don't want to pay it out.
What, and how does that, is that like, when we put that in there, is that a hard and fast thing? Like, like if, if a project couldn't afford to do another bond, or it creates a financial hardship for them at that point in the process? Is that, I mean, if it's in there, does, do we have to abide by that, or is there a way to?
Well, if they don't.
I don't know what their normal process would be.
If they don't build infrastructure, you don't want to accept the subdivision.
Right.
And if they're building it before they've issued bonds, then it's not really a big issue. They, they built it, they're on risk, and.
Right.
They're stuck with streets that nobody owns. This is really for, they want to file the plat, and so they've done the bonds, and so we're gonna continue to require those bonds be done, and it's either by extending the bond or collecting on the bond and doing it ourselves.
Okay. So an example would be, in Hunter's Crossing, there's that Bear Hunter Drive that runs along the western boundary of Hunter's Crossing. There is actually a performance bond that we have in place that covers the additional improvements that are gonna be needed to complete the full cross-section of the road, and that bond has been in place since 2014, and it's just continuously been renewed, and we're actually finally talking to the developer, and they're looking at finishing it now, so they don't have to keep renewing the bond.
Because they get to pay every time they renew.
Yes. But you also don't want it to be called, because that really affects your credit and ability to get a future performance bond on another project.
All right, so this is the Wesley Show. As I mentioned, current ordinance allows 20% maintenance bond for one year, and then we wanted to, I put in a different part to be 100% for two years, and then so the question came up, what should it be? And so you had asked to contact some other cities to find out what they're doing, and so Wesley's done that.
So I looked at.
What page are we on, actually?
66. So I looked at four cities in Travis County, and they range from the lowest, which is Travis County, and they require 10% for one year. And then the other end of the spectrum is, the city of Buda requires 100% for two years. And so then there's three cities in between, there's Georgetown, the city of Kyle, and the city of Dripping Springs that have something in between, so.
What's Kyle's?
Kyle's is 35% for two years. Georgetown is 25% for one year, and Dripping Springs is 10% for two years. So I think the, the main key part of that is the time. It needs to be two years, because that's when, two years gives you a good amount of time to see if any defects have surfaced, and a lot of issues with pavement or utilities under that pavement don't really manifest themselves after, or before a year.
Usually needs two freeze cycles for them to show.
Yes. A lot of times, it's two years and a day, you know, we've gotten lucky on some of those, but two years seems to be.
Okay. How about a percent?
I mean, I, I mean, I'd be comfortable with, as long as it's more than at least 20% for two years, I mean, I think 35's probably a good compromise.
The idea behind that is that not everything's gonna fail. For, in that two-year period, you might have something that, a part of it that fails, but the whole thing's not, so we don't need necessarily 100%.
Right. That's right. And it's, a lot of times, we can charge that, in fact, our current ordinance only covers the streets and utilities, but if we have in here, I think it was of the whole, entire construction cost, right?
Correct.
Which would include, you know, earthwork and, and other work that's not necessarily something that you would expect to fail, it's more just subsidiary to the other, the other pieces of the development. And so if we charge maybe a lower percentage, but over a larger construction estimate, cost estimate, you could still get, you know, quite a bit of money to cover any defects.
Would it be fair to say that we are most comparable to Buda, though? Population-wise and.
And they're 100% at, 100% for two years.
My, my thought is this, is that if we have to absorb that cost for one reason or another, we're not a city, or Travis County, that could absorb that cost and move it around and cover it, which is my only thought with 100%.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, if we need it for good, and if we don't, then it is what it is.
And I, I think, having 100%, I wouldn't expect a major cost increase to the developer to get that bond compared to 20%. I think normally, it's the time difference that increases the cost, and since we're already at two years, the difference in cost between what we have now and what, what that would, what that would mean.
Does everybody, does everybody understand what we're talking about with the maintenance fund? There's no dumb questions, there's just questions that aren't answered, or asked. If you don't ask them, we can't answer them.
You've got a good point, though, because of our size, if we've got, say, something like Hunter's Crossing, one of the major roads failed, that's a big hit to the city, and we just don't have that volume to absorb.
Not only that, but if we did have to absorb it, what else are, what other streets?
What else is coming?
In the city is gonna have to de-deep for another year or two, to, before we do it, so.
And I would also add that it, for us, for the city to go in and bear the cost of repairing that infrastructure, it would probably cost more than what it would've cost the developer to install it previously, so.
Repair's always more expensive than the.
I was gonna say that. How are you going back to fixing something that you've gotta tear out?
And many times, we have to bid it publicly, and there's just a lot more effort that a city has to go through to get that work done compared to a private developer.
And the delay, because you have to bid it, and all the hoops you have to jump through.
That's right.
So, were we, everybody like 100, then, for two years?
Yeah, I think we should stay with 100 for two years. Especially if we've got some neighboring cities that are in that area.
Yeah. There's definitely precedent.
So I will fix that. The attorney suggested this, as you recall, we've got basically two design approaches, one is the city approach, and one is the rural approach, and I put in that the developer could elect to use the rural approach inside the city. Remember, the rural approach is clusters zoning and set aside open space, which, inside the city, that could make sense in some places, but the attorney said he didn't think we should leave it to the developer to elect it, that we at least ought to approve it, so. Put in a provision that we'll use the street cross-sections in the currently adopted transportation We talked about civic spaces, those kind of cut-through spots, if they want to break up a long block, but not with the street, but just a pedestrian connection, and I put in that civic lots could be owned and managed by an HOA, as long as the public pedestrian access is provided, so they can't put gates across it and close it off and say, "Well, this is only for the, the residents of the neighborhood." Likely, it's the neighborhood that's gonna use it, but we want to make, make sure it is public access. Added, we're extending some authority into the ETJ that a lot of cities don't do, but we're doing it under the Texas Water Code, and so the attorney wanted to make sure we add this phrase, protect and prevent water pollution, and that's because that ties back to that particular section of the water code. So you'll see that pop up in a couple of places. Wanted to make it clear that we put a provision in here that if land is in the 100-year floodplain, we don't want it to be developed. Why let people, even at two-foot above, you're likely to have some type of damage or inconvenience if you've got floodwaters all the way around you, you may be the only island out there. But there is a way to reclaim the floodplain by filling it in, or increasing the capacity of the channel, or providing some detention or something like that, and so I did want to leave this provision, but I wanted to make sure that we had what's called a conditional letter or map provision in hand before we actually approved the plat. We didn't want to be in a situation where we approved the plat, and then FEMA says, "No, you can't do that." I know some cities have gotten into that trap before. So as part of the development process, a developer says, "I'm gonna reclaim the, the floodplain," we want to make sure he goes through the clomer process before we approve the final plat.
How long does that process take for the consumer to get that letter from them? Is that a month or six-month type of?
It's more like a year to two years, sometimes.
I didn't think you could ever fill in a floodplain.
Well, yeah, you can.
You can, if you have a lot that's below, you just bring in infill, bring it up, so that when you build on it, it's.
Except that, keep in mind, that flood's going down a channel, so think of it's like a hose. If you bring in fill, you're squeezing that hose.
Yeah.
What happens to the water? Water has to go up. So the cross-sectional area has to be maintained. So if you're filling in here, you've got to account for that additional flow somewhere else, or you end up flooding somebody else.
But that, that's the point of the clomer, though, right?
Right, right.
Just to make sure that, okay.
Some cities allow.
Oh, okay, I see. A conditional letter or map provision, okay.
Some cities allow what they call compensating cuts and fills, where you, you might fill in one area of the floodplain, but you actually remove an equivalent amount of material somewhere else in the floodplain, so that net, net impact isn't.
Now, something, something like that is being planned, do the homeowners or landowners in the vicinity around that area get notified that somebody's about to make some changes to?
They typically only get notified if the flood level is going to change next to their property, so. And then there's a section on planned development districts, but since planned development is a zoning item, attorney wanted to make sure we noted that, that's only in the city limits, we don't extend zoning into the ETJ.
What is a planned development district?
That's basically a special zoning district for a particular development, where instead of applying our regular zoning regulations, they come up with their own zoning regulations that apply to that particular area. Pecan Park.
Hunter's Crossing.
Hunter's Crossing, for examples of planned development. There are pros and cons, so.
Okay, yes, there are.
Honey Creek Bill.
Honey Creek Bill.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
In the tree section, and we went through that, uh, I had two cutoffs for tree sizes. And I had made some changes because of the recent state legislation. And so it's ten inches and eighteen inches. But there were still some places in where I had some references to fifteen inches. I'd taken all the six-inch references out. So I just wanted to clarify, so everything is either, we, we only care about something that's greater than ten inches. If it's more than eighteen inches, we really care about it, 'cause that's a really big tree. And then in between, there's some different standards, so I just wanted to, to make that consistent, so we didn't have some conflicts.
So, Lynn, did you have some questions about trees and sizes and planning and?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Uh, the attorney, uh, added a little bit more to the firewise. He noted that the thirty-foot buffer area is actually called a fire safety zone in a lot of cities ordinances, so I grabbed on that. He also said that, um, I wanted to pu- uh, put a note on the face of the plat to, and, and put in the deed restrictions, that they at least have to pick up the dead wood once a year. Uh, you know, we're trying to protect from fire, we don't want them to just kinda leave all that brush and dead wood laying around, so they have to clear up within that thirty-foot area, uh, on an annual basis.
I'm glad we did that because the last go-through, it felt like it was an option. It, it felt like they didn't have to, they didn't have to maintain that thirty-foot and, and if you go into any Tahitian Village-type area, even after the fires, those that still have homes that didn't burn, never did that, still didn't do it.
So just to clarify, so that the, the deed, the plat and the deed restriction portion are to continue into the future, but this specifically applies to the developer? Yes, yes?
This would, if you do a plat, um, that's in the wildfire areas, then, you know, it may show on there or have a note about the thirty-foot buffer. On the face of the plat, there'll be a comment about that. And hopefully title searches will pick that up, but for sure title searches will pick up deed restrictions. So that's why we also put it in deed restrictions.
So then it's also on homeowner to, who, when they purchase, and if they don't, is it an annual A or who?
Well, so that's, that's my question is, is, w- w- we have a deed restriction, which is not the same as an ordinance, so the only way to enforce that would be through a suit, right?
Correct, correct.
So is this something we would also wanna kick over as like an ordinance, so that like code enforcement could enforce this?
If you wanted to go that route.
I just, I just don't see, I mean, it's, it's, I, I like it, and we all agree it makes sense. My question, and kinda, you know, I talked about it, is my biggest concern with this going forward is teeth. I mean, these are, these are the rules, if you don't follow them, what can we do about it? And so my concern would be, we have this, even in the deed restrictions, how do we?
Probably the best way to put it is to go into your, the nuisance section of the code.
Right.
And we already have a section on tall weeds and stuff like that, that we would have to address something like this as well.
Look, that's a good idea.
So, so would it be redundant to put it in here and try and do, do it in separate, is that part of the ordinance? Or would it make sense to just pull it from here and then work with, work with code enforcement and the PD to?
Well, I think in a subdivision ordinance, you wanna identify, make sure that it's shown. How it gets enforced is probably gonna be the codes.
Okay.
Well, I was thinking we, uh, for most subdivisions, we approve the HOA restrictions. And that, maybe when we look at those, we could make sure that there's some kind of, um.
But there may or may not be an HOA, so.
Yes, that's right.
I just wanna make sure that we all agree it's a good, good thing to have, that we have a way to enforce in the future, so that we're not.
Probably be a recommendation to the council to.
I think so, I think, uh, I think that we, a- as a community, still lack being prepared ahead of time. I mean, I, I see it every day, and, um, people for some reason didn't learn.
Yeah.
In a somewhat related note, you guys will be interested to know that we've had an inquiry about someone, actually he's out in the county, he's complaining about how long their cul-de-sac is with now the second way out, and they want us to come fix it.
Well, I have a question, um, so.
It's English, make sure we catch it.
I usually have a very loud voice, um, but allergies. Um, so this, we're talking about subdivision ordinances, right? So for instance, my home is not in a subdivision. I've been in the same place for forty-six years, pretty much. Um, how does, how does what we're doing tonight, um, affect already established neighborhoods?
It doesn't affect you until such time as you wanna build something new. If you wanna tear down your house and build a new house, then as a condition to the building permit, we would require that you plat it. So currently what you would have would be what we call a lot of record. And so as long as you have your house on your lot, this doesn't affect you at all.
So, you said it earlier that, um, like Tahitian Village, some of those homes didn't burn down, so they would not fall.
Okay, by putting the enforcement requirement into the nuisance part of the code, that could apply to existing people.
This, this would apply, so, so like on the, on the nor- north side of, of town here, we have lots of, still like lots of open.
Right.
Space and lots and, you know, stuff like that, so these would all apply going forward. So as the area on the north side of town, you know, starts to develop and, and people come in and build, they would be, this would all apply to them and whatnot. So that's how it would affect like that side, you know, where it's.
You might have a neighbor that it doesn't apply, because they're already there.
Right.
Right, and so their brush is all over the place.
So we would have got the nuisance part of it. If we carry this into that, then, then it will affect.
It will, it will apply, okay.
So this just adds one more layer on top of that enforcement ability.
Good question.
Kind of tells the goal for the village, you're gonna have to deal with this down the road. There's an ordinance following on, but you're gonna have to deal with it, heads up.
Okay, here's our common issue. The tree preservation, I had written to address just what's in the city. The attorney has suggested extending it out into the ETJ.
I would assume that the, the authority exists to do that, right? Cause he wouldn't have suggested it otherwise.
Right, we would have the authority in the portion of the ETJ where we regulate subdivisions. So it wouldn't be all, you know, part of our ETJ, the county regulates and part we regulate. But the portion that we regulate, we could extend the tree preservation requirements.
Why wouldn't we?
Cause they may not want you to.
Since I think the ETJ is theoretically a part that could at some point become the city, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to put that there, cause we're talking about something not that's gonna happen the next year. This is long-term. This is something that's gonna, you know, it's gonna take ten years for it, ten years from now, we may have to deal with it. So I think we should expand it as far as we can.
And, he, I know we have multiple ETJs, is it would apply just to the statutory ETJ or the elected ones that we have?
In the area A.
Area A, okay.
Explain what area A is, please.
That's a part that goes approximately out three miles. It goes as far as the, the Hyatt Resort. Uh, and areas inside, basically north of, um, my mind just went blank, twenty-one.
Yeah, there's, um.
And, and, and from the Hyatt M is part of the area A that we review and regulate the subdivisions. All the ETJ that goes all the way out to the Travis County line, the county regulates all that.
I'm kind of in agreement that, that the whole point of the ETJ is to have, maintain some control or something that will eventually be in the city.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent on that.
It would make sense now, we have this document that hasn't been, hasn't been redone in a long time.
Right.
That the idea would be, it's gonna be another good ten, fifteen years before we go through and redo the whole thing again, so.
Especially with the, how much everybody's concerned about the environment sustainability now, this fits right in with the mindset that, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, we didn't necessarily have it. It's there today and more and more people are interested in this, so.
Are we unanimous?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good change.
Do you have something?
Just be aware of this.
I want you to go over this. I think it's mainly just the developers out there.
Well, developers and, you know, the mom-and-pop developers. The reason they moved outside the city limits was not to deal with city regulations, so.
Well, and, 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 well, just, just, just to clarify, we're joking, we're, we're kinda joking about it, but, but the, these elected ETJs and extended ETJs have been around for.
The eighties.
Eighties, so I mean, we're, so any, any developer that's gone in and bought property within the last thirty, almost forty years, right, should've known during their due diligence period that they would be inside the ETJ and that the city would, you know, have the authority to do that. So I'm just saying that they may not like it, and I get that, I understand it. But if you bought something last forty years with the idea that the city maintains some control over it, that's a, it's a due diligence thing in my, in my opinion.
Ironically, we get people that come in fairly frequently and want us to regulate people more in the ETJ, because they're being impacted by those lack of rules.
And one argument is that if they weren't in our ETJ, they'd be in Austin's ETJ, so it could be worse.
Their statutory ETJ is five miles, so.
Yeah, they're, they're already but up to ours.
Well, that's kinda how we ended up with.
Right.
The one as big as we do.
I kinda softened, the question came up about, did you really have to hire a, a arborist to tell you that a tree was dead if everybody knew the tree was dead? So I kinda softened that up to say that the city's inspector would determine whether it's dead. But if there was some doubt, cause sometimes what looks like a dead tree is not really dead, that he could require that you get a, an arborist to double-check it, so. In a way, uh, th- this is a way to kinda simplify the process.
It's like a type of, uh, it says if the city's inspector may request that the homeowner retains.
Here, yeah.
Take out the app.
Yeah. Okay, so noted.
So we're not assuming that the city inspector is gonna be an arborist also?
Does the city have an inspector?
We.
Do now.
But they're not, uh, an arborist, so.
We did have one, but he, uh, moved to Corpus Christi.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, that's an interim, on an interim basis.
No, it's like a, we have an.
Howard Harvin, he's an interim building official. He's not an arborist.
The question came up last time about, um, getting a permit and thought that the language was too strong. And so I added this language to say, unless the tree is exempt. So if you go back and look at what's exempt, you're gonna find out that most of the time the tree, it doesn't require a permit. But I just wanna put that there to, like, put people on notice that not everything's gonna be regulated.
Thank you.
And I will happy to note that our attorney wanted me to take some legalese out, so I was happy that he asked, so I, I took some legalese out. And here I was clarifying between the twelve inches and eighteen inches. Uh, this, I think, just got moved somewhere. And I put in total subdivision size, just to clarify, we're talking about the entire sub. So if it's a ten-acre subdivision, then you look and see what, that it's not individual lots within the subdivision.
Oh, okay, that's a good clarification.
I had put in that it was basically at the developer's option, whether he, uh, paid fee in lieu of. And the attorney wanted to clarify that it shouldn't be his sole option, that he need, he needs to get permission.
Right.
From the city.
And how long people do that? And, and what is the, what is the legal side of whether or not you, you approve that as the, I mean?
Well, as far as the planning director?
Right, so if somebody comes in and they're like, hey, we'd like to do this, what is the, what is the basis for saying?
No.
Is it just kind of like, at when? Is it kind of a totality of the, of the development?
And, and that's a good point. We may want to put in some criteria of when and how you can say no. You know, my point is, i- if you can comply and you just don't want to, then that's a, a no. Uh, there may be situations where you just can't comply, or it's gonna result in a situation where it's just not gonna look right. There was, and I wanna say what's in like Round Rock or Georgetown, where they actually had excavated around the trees down ten feet.
Right.
And so you got this big tree sitting up with a, a piece of dirt just around the, uh, and it just didn't make sense anymore.
Right. And I, and I, and I ask only so that we don't get one developer that looks and goes, well, this developer did it, and then all of a sudden the city's in the middle of, you know, spending money on a lawsuit trying to defend. Yeah, we're trying to defend an ordinance that, you know, doesn't, it's, isn't specific about what would qualify or, or what our basis is for rejection.
And then there's alw- there's also a provision later that says if they don't like what the planning director says, they can always come to you guys for. And, and I think that's, that, that should be the case anyway. It shouldn't, you know, the staff shouldn't be the last word.
Right.
There oughta be a, a safety valve. Uh, attorney also asked, uh, suggested, instead of just using the cash payment to buy trees, he also put in, and landscaping, so.
Tree work is necessary as landscaping.
And sometimes it's hard to find places to plant trees.
Right, exactly.
Okay, easements, so now we're to where we were, where we ended? Um. Everybody understands what an easement is and how it differs from, uh, fee simple? Uh, you know, you own your lot in fee simple, so that means you own everything. You have all the rights to that piece of dirt. You can separate part of those rights to somebody else, like the utility company or the city, and grant them an easement, so they have access to your property, but you still own the underlying, uh, fee simple land. So it's a little bit more detailed than what was in there before, uh, not a lot of changes.
I've got a, I've got a question about just kind of easements in general, and it goes back to your first two bullets. It says, we need to have ten feet minimum for easements in the nations. Why ten feet, why not twelve, why not five? What's that determining factor to subsequent common practice or what?
Because most backhoes are wider than five feet, and sometimes you have to drive a backhoe down, so ten feet's for, pretty standard. Now, there've been some cases where it might be ten feet, but there's five foot on one side of the property line and five foot on the other part, side of the property line, but. Don't know if you have a better answer?
Well, it's, uh, a lot of times there's also multiple types of utilities that need to be, uh, within either the right-of-way or outside of the right-of-way. It's your underground electric, your cable and telephone lines, there's, um. Gas lines are another utility, and so sometimes you either need that just horizontal width to be able to fit everything in, or you have utilities that are, um, like Dave said, deep enough to where, to get the proper equipment in to be able to, to make repairs and access it, you need that room to work.
Okay.
I do have a drawing, which I think will probably end up in the construction standards, that showed if you had all underground utilities, where you'd have to place them in the right-of-way. And actually, they won't all fit in a ten-foot parkway. You need an extra five feet. Cause remember, if you're a backhoe operator trying to get down to the water line, you don't wanna hit the gas line on the way down, so.
Can you be surprised how often that happens?
We've all seen that on the news.
Uh, we do have a requirement that, uh, in most cases, when you have utilities, uh, extended to a person's property, that we wanna make sure that we have the easements and the utility lines to go through their property, so that the next person can connect on as well.
So that's like going along the street, this is the first house on the street, it goes at full length.
Right.
Also, lot next to it.
Right, it doesn't just go to the house and stop, cause the next house will then have to go across the first guy's property to connect on.
I've seen that in the county where, where one landowner won't necessarily let the utilities cross his house for somebody that just bought land and was building a new house. So then he has to figure out how to get a right-track or whatever. To his house, so they have to go across the street and get somebody else to be there.
Well, one, one of the problems we, one of the problems we have, um, in parts of the city is we'll have, we'll have properties where like houses are tied in utilities that are like on other people's properties and, you know, like, you know, they don't, they don't pay, they pay sewer, but they don't really have their own sewer tap or, you know, they share a water line and nobody knows, cause it was done way back when.
So that's a prime example of the benefits of having platting requirements, because when you file that plat, you're able to clean a lot of that. file that plat, you're able to clean a lot of that up and make sure that you get those easements and other dedications that you need to accommodate development of that land and also provide for future development.
And our utility, our city utility provider, like if you run, you know, a water line, they make you run all the way across your, your hole with your, hole with your lot. Not just stop, so.
BPL. Not sure what the real history is, but somewhere along the line, BPL decided that they needed to have twenty foot easements. And to service a line, you do need twenty feet uh, because you don't know which side you're going to have to pull the truck in on the overhead line. You know, the overhead line is only, the, the crossbar is only three to four foot at max. But you have to pull a truck and a, a cherry picker on either side to, to get in and work on it. Well, for some reason, that's been applied to easements in the front yard. And so we have some subdivisions around town where there may be a fifty foot right of way, and then another twenty foot utility easement, which was intended for BPL. We only need ten foot either side, so I don't know why you need the twenty foot. The, the power line's not going to be on the private property. It's going to be on the edge of the right of way at most. So I have reduced this down to ten foot when it's next to this, the front yard. Because I think there's, there's plenty of room to work on it, and I, I don't want to be in a position where we're taking more than we actually need to get something done. I, I point that out because um, our utility company may kind of Curtis will fuss. Um, it also causes problem in our form-based code. Because the intent of the form-based code is we're trying to bring buildings to the street, and we have a bill, a bill to line of often ten feet. Well, if there's a twenty foot easement, we can't bring it ten foot to the, the front property line, so.
Would that, would that prevent you from building in that, I mean?
Yeah, when we've had people come in wanting us to vacate.
Yeah, I've got, I've got several cases right now where we're trying to drop some of those easements back down so that they can meet their
Because the easement's like in, in the living room?
Yeah, yeah, but exactly.
Well, the form-based code might allow, uh, what, a five or ten foot front step?
Well, sometimes requires in some set situations, it requires, you know, between five and fifteen. Well, I can't get to fifteen, which is the, you know, maximum setback, because there's twenty foot PUE.
But you also have the language where they could get more if they can show that they, there's a
And we're saying could get more, meaning that BPL, but though BPL, they would go and say they want more. That's the, the And can a homeowner or, or, not a homeowner, can a can the developer say, no, he doesn't want you to have twenty, he doesn't want to give twenty?
Actually, you are the leader of power.
We are. So, so we can say, we don't, we don't think twenty foot is necessary, if, if it's appropriate to say that.
Would Bluebonnet?
Wait.
Fit in that, or is that just something that you would be?
Any franchise utility can always ask for more.
Okay.
Bluebonnet has hunters crossing Riverside, so they would have, if they, in the ETJ, they would have the developers.
Okay.
So is public utility easements are what they call a non-exclusive easement, which like Dave said, any any um, public utility has the right to be in that, in that easement.
I'm, I'm thinking of like the process here, so at what point would because BPL doesn't review files or anything, I mean, they, they would come in.
They do.
Oh, do, do they? Ever seen one?
Inside their service territory.
Okay. So are we sending these out to like Bluebonnet then?
If they're in their territory.
Okay.
Well, we
We don't, we don't as staff. They're supposed to go talk to Bluebonnet to get service.
Requires the developer to do that.
Okay.
Personally, I think that city ought to take care of that, but I'm not made that jump yet, so.
I was just thinking the process, like, would we get through, where we have like approval, but then BPL gets it after the fact and they request it, but then they say no, we're kind of stuck with.
Uh, Dave made a great point. We, we, that is something we need to do a better job of. We've run into some issues, more on the building permit side, where the builder or the developer didn't properly coordinate with a utility such as Bluebonnet. And then when they get to the point where they need to have those utilities installed, there's, there's an issue, so.
So just a reminder about uh, legal requirements to grant easements. Uh, at the time of subdivision, since we're creating demand, we have the right to require the developer, the landowner, to grant whatever easements are necessary to support his or her subdivision. If we screw up and don't get the easement that we need, and they file the plat, if the utility company wants the easement, they get to pay for it. So at the time of plating, it's the only time that we get it for free, so.
Well, I'm, I'm curious about that, just the, I understand that, but I'm a little taken back that at the time of plating, we wouldn't make sure that Bluebonnet had reviewed, was able to out in Bluebonnet's area within our ETJ. We don't actually assure that Bluebonnet's look at. We're taking the developer's board, that they've included Bluebonnet's comments on the plat, so.
Well, one thing we that
So now here in the city, here in the city, we would give it to BPL for sure, right? They would always look at it. But yeah, then we're going to prove a different plat that we're not necessarily going to make sure Bluebonnet looks at during staff review process.
And that's definitely something we're that we need to do a better job on. I will say with utilities like Bluebonnet, they're able to require additional easements that they need, and they kind of use the leverage of if you need power to your house, then we need this easement, and so they're usually able to, to get additional easements that they need.
So that, so that's my, so that would, so that feeds into like what my initial thought was, was if we, if they apply for the additional easement and they say no, is there a provision to deny electricity to that? I know what it, like in the county it is, like in the county, if you don't want to give Bluebonnet an easement, too bad, so sad, but we order the city, and we approve, you know, the plat, and everything's good to go, and then after the fact, you know, would, would we be in a position as the city to be like, ah, just kidding? You need to give us this, or we're not going to give you power.
A- a- and that's, that's honestly happened before, when, when there's a um, in fact, BPL does this um, with site development plans. They actually get a blanket public utility easement that is over the entire lot, because they haven't gone out and been able to determine the best route to get that service line from the main power supply to the building.
Is, is there not a way to codify that into this process, where we have that, and then just before the final was, is done, they get a chance to review it just in case?
So the BPL standards are part of our overall construction standards, and so there is provisions in there, and in fact, B- um, BPL has their own list of plat notes that detail that. And so there's a note that says the landowner has to give them a blanket easement that is then shrunken down to cover just where that service line is, once it's, once it's installed. Yeah. I think, did you, didn't you kind of go through that with Spring Street with your?
So would, wouldn't that negate the request for the twenty feet? Wouldn't they be able to handle that?
Well, the, the blanket easement applies to just getting the service land. They've been asking the twenty foot for their distribution lines.
Maybe another way to put this is these are the minimum easements that we require on a plat, and there might be other utilities apart from city-owned utilities or city, uh, well, city-owned utilities that need something in addition to that, and that's, that's just on them to, to acquire.
I'm just trying to think of a way that might be easier to, like a catch-all, so that they don't necessarily have to come and request. They can just say, we actually need this. It's not a, it's not a provision for somebody to say no if it's needed, so.
Well, if it's needed, we're more than happy to provide it. I think the problem in the past is they've asked for a twenty foot easement, whether they needed it or not.
Right, okay.
And this just kind of clarifies that there needs to be more of a need.
Well, I'm also really quick on kind of item four, where we're talking about the easements again. I'm slightly concerned that, you know, you go, someone goes to plat their property, and they dedicate a ten foot, say they're the first one in this, in a, a non-conforming subdivision to have plowed the property. They give a ten foot easement. Technically, there's not that additional ten foot on the adjacent property, which would give BPL a twenty foot easement, you know, between the two properties. You know, but then they need service, so BPL can go, well, we need twenty. So unduly, that homeowner is being asked to get more property towards easement than, say, if the adjacent neighbor had platted at a similar time, or had already gone through that plating process.
Well, they have to get twenty feet on their one side, unless the neighbor wanted to agree.
Well, no, I, I see, but technically, the neighbor has to agree, because the neighbor can't do anything unless they plat and then give that ten feet. So it's only a matter of time before the neighbor gives up that ten feet. They may not be doing it now, but they might be doing it fifty years, a hundred years, hundred and fifty years. But yet the homeowner that already platted is now required to give up an extra ten feet because of just a timing issue. You know, this person's redoing their house before that person's redoing their house. And it just seems like, you know, you're just putting a lot, by allowing BPL to come back and request the twenty foot of that person that's doing it, rather than making an equitable sharing of that easement between the property lines.
I, I just don't know how, I just don't know what
Well, the fact is, BPL could get in with ten feet, they just they might go around something a little bit. I'm just concerned about that.
What basis does the city, I mean, you can't force the neighbor to give up?
No, but at the same time, it just seems unfair also that someone is doing it earlier before someone else. You know, it's like, you know, you can always tell the guy that never built the fence at his yard, because he's got, you know, four different colors of fence, because he allowed his neighbors to do it. You know, it's the, it's the same
Just to clarify, my big concern is not side yard lines, it's the front yard.
The front, yeah.
And the, there's not an adjoining neighbor, it's the city's street. And the street, you can put a
You can put whatever you want.
Track out there to work on the line if you need to. You don't need twenty foot in the front yard. And that was the intent of this.
Really agree, but at the same time, this, I have run into this.
Can we clar- can we clarify? Would, would that work, like, if we clarified that this was the front property line, they may request twenty feet at the front?
You're just saying it's okay to maybe get a ten at the front because you use the street.
Right.
Not that they, you want them to have twenty, but it's reasonable they'll have ten at the front because they already have the street.
Right, they've, they've got fifty foot of right of way to work with, so.
You agree that it should be twenty on the sidelines and, and the back line, or the back line?
If they need to put a line down the side, so.
It's just a matter of, you know, it makes sense that that's public utility. You know, and you're asking one homeowner to stomach the entire share of it. All of it was to the common good.
Well, rest assured, we're probably going to have a lot of discussions with BPL and Curtis work all this out, so I'll, I'll raise those issues and see what we can do. Public open space easements. Uh, you may know them as sight visibility triangles. You all have probably been in a situation where you pulled up to a corner and you can't see around the corner to figure out if there's any
Across the street.
Uh, if it's safe to pull up.
Across the street's bad.
Um, I've got, you know, actually down in Main, Main Street, well, actually
Main and Beach.
Uh, yeah, Main and Pine is kind of bad looking around, particularly when there's cars parked, so. A lot of cities will do that, and yours currently kind of does. They, they basically do twenty-five foot by twenty-five foot and just say, clear that out. But as it turns out, that doesn't really give you the visibility, because there's still something far enough out. So what we've done here is rather than a single visibility, and, and Wesley has promised he's going to draft this up before we leave. So instead of a single uh, twenty-five by twenty-five, there'll actually be two uh, what are those, isosceles triangles? So that you can actually calculate what the visibility really needs to be. And it depends on um, the uh, speed of the traffic and how far you can pull up to what that actually is. Uh, and I, I actually think it takes less property off a person's yard because it's a narrower strip than it would be just a flat twenty-five by twenty-five triangle.
Well, and, you know, I, I think a good change that this makes is the, that twenty-five foot triangle is based, it, it talks about the right of way. And so it would be twenty-five feet off this right of way corner, which really doesn't play into the overall sight distance. This actually goes based on the
The curb line.
Pavement widths and the, the way the roadways lay out. So it's a much better way to uh, calculate it.
And typically, there'd be a provision to prevent anything that obstructs visibility up to two foot or less than eleven foot, so you could have a clear uh, view. And I'm particularly sensitive, I drive a car that's fairly low to the ground, and it's kind of hard to see uh, around corners sometimes.
Dave, would this apply if there is an existing tree in that area?
There are some exceptions to existing trees. Uh, you wouldn't want to let them to plant new trees or plant new vegetation, or if they plant something in that area that they'd have to keep it trimmed down.
The shrubs, we, the shrubs, the destructions tag.
Right.
There's a little fence in, on Main Street, you'll notice the fence comes like this, and then at the corner, it comes down like this, because you couldn't see around the corner.
Farmer's market fence.
Yeah, we finally took those rose bushes out there.
I don't know if there's anything, um. We, we will have a requirement that whatever's in the hundred-year floodplain will be platted as an easement. So that will actually show up on the plat. Now, what the good news is, that puts everybody on notice that you can't build in that area, uh, that there are restrictions on that. The bad news is that hundred-year floodplains change from time to time. So be aware that, you know, simply by plating an easement, that doesn't fix the world in time, that uh, conditions may change, but
How do we handle something, I, I can see it happening in the next ten or fifteen years, where you have something that we approve a plat and then the floodplain changes. Are we, are we still honoring that plat?
You honor that easement plus the floodplain, whatever, whatever is greater.
Okay.
Now, if the floodplain for some reason got less, there was a major flood control project, then we would entertain vacating the portion of the drain, the floodplain easement that's no longer needed.
Okay.
Added a situation in here for stream bank buffers. I think I'd shown you a graph at one time. Um, the floodplain might be contained entirely within the channel of the creek. But we're saying that you also have to have fifty foot behind that, that preferably kept in that natural vegetation. But we particularly don't want people building buildings right up to the edge of the bank, and then when erosion occurs, well, city, come fix my problem. My, my building's going to fall into the creek. So we're just recognizing to have a setback away from the, the top of the bank. Uh, access easements, I don't know that there's anything exciting there. So questions on easements. Streets, uh, most of this is fairly standard. Uh, I do have a, a policy issue here. Street names. You currently don't have any restrictions on street names, other than they can't sound too much like another street name. And that's for
Living on the street. We are the first person, of course, that gets to name the street, since it was, it was like an out in the country. And it was in Aggie, so first he hit him with Gigum, which they wouldn't let him have, so he named it Reveling.
What are the arguments against and for living people? Or no living people?
Well, living, well, for living people, there's the chance that they do something.
Nefarious?
Nefarious, that, yeah, you don't want your street name that anymore.
People um, in a subdivision being upset because they lived on Tiger Woods Way. Back in two thousand nine, that was not the most popular street, because
Are there statutory restrictions on names, like obscene names and stuff like, I, I would assume we don't have to
The, the developer will propose a list of street names, and then we will double check to make sure that they don't conflict with anything that would cause a nine-one dispatcher to have a problem.
And then we also send it to the county?
But, but they don't tell you what you can or can't name it. They just say that there may be a problem. And as an example, we recently changed the names on some streets in Tahitian Village, because there, there was no logical, and some, some of them sounded the same. I know where I live, we used to have uh, streets named after Texas rivers. And you'd say, well, that's no big problem, until someone's on the phone and trying to talk to an ambulance dispatcher, is it an Oasis Street or an Hes Street? If you're under stress, they can sound a lot alike, so. But the que- issue here is, do you want to allow the developer to name it after himself and his kids?
I'd like to throw here, until what started, this started in Austin here in the last year with names of people and going back in history. I would almost propose, let's not use anybody's name, because what may sound good today, ten, twenty, fifty years from now, could turn into a problem. I wouldn't even have thought of this two years ago, but considering what's going on in Austin right now. Let's, I just prefer to do that and just avoid the whole thing in the future.
I think we get to pick the names.
All naming comes to the planning and zoning.
When you say anybody's name, are you talking about anybody in history or...
Any, any, any proper name of a person.
Because we have...
Because, yeah, I know, we've, we've used names of people for thousands of years. And like I said, until this whole thing in Austin has blown up in the last two years, I would never even have thought about that. But it's becoming a social issue now.
So, I thought, I mean, you, you have Elizabeth Drive, you have Mary Ann Street, I mean, who makes up those names? You have Lee Street.
I have Cynthia.
You have, and when I go to town, I look for my last name, or I'll be like, oh, that's my street in Bastrop. So, for me, what I always thought was to have a, a street named after somebody in history that was like a dedication. And how was, how was that approved? So, how was the MLK Drive approved? Doesn't that go through city council and stuff?
Usually what happens in the case of MLK Drives is, there was a pre-existing street there, and the city council passed an ordinance technically changed the name of the street.
And what we're talking about here is a brand-new subdivision, and the developer's laying out streets. Do we allow him to name it anything, or do we...
I'm just going to say that I, I think a restriction on all names is, personally, I think it's just, it's too much. We exclude presidents, we exclude things like that, but, and while I understand what you're, what you're getting, and I think that, I think that limiting that might be a little over, my opinion only, so, but...
The reason I bring this up is, some cities have limitations.
Say, you can't name somebody unless they've been dead at least two years, or something like that.
Wait for all that dirt to come out.
Do we, I'm questioning, do we need to have restriction on, I mean, do we need to do this? Or, I just don't want to be overreaching into too much territory there. I can totally understand why you wouldn't want to have inappropriate names, which I don't think that would be allowable, but I, I don't want to get so overreaching where we're restricting too much either.
Is it safe to say, at least?
Yeah, I was going to say, there's nothing wrong with a Cynthia Street, there's lots of Cynthia's. You know, there's first names, but, you know, proper names, first and last names.
Like, some people in Austin were not happy, you know, years down the road to live on Lance Armstrong Drive, you know, so that became a problem after a while.
Is it safe to say that for your typical subdivision, which when we think of like a developer in a subdivision, that normally they try to follow some type of general course? You know, like, like presidents or trees or...
Every, yeah, every street in the colony is named after a person.
So, I mean, the only time I see this being like, you know, an issue is we have somebody who's doing, you know, like, ten home subdivision, and they get like one road or two roads, and, you know, so can we, can we place restrictions on developments of less than a certain number of like lots? Like, if you're building forty or more lots, name whatever you want, we don't care, we assume that they're not going to...
What's the process of changing the name of your street?
City council, city council, we have to pass an ordinance, we have to notify everybody, we have to notify all the people that use those addresses, like the post office, utility companies.
All the mapping services.
Google Maps, stuff like that.
It's, it's, it's not a painless process.
So, if they are going to be required to give us a list of the names, right? We said that?
Right.
Then what would be the process? So, let's say they give us a list of names, and then we have a problem with the list of names, then how would we address that?
We, usually we'd ask them to come up with a different name.
Okay, so then wouldn't that be the language we need to put in there, something about us being able to approve?
What I'm getting at is, is there's some criteria about why you would approve.
Why you would...
Why would we approve or deny?
And a lot of times, the developer will submit a long list of names and actually reserve those so that they can use them in future sections.
Is this not something that we can just do at planning director discretion with an appeal to planning and zoning?
I was just asking the question, do you, and particularly on, on a developer naming it after himself, so.
I don't really...
Is the wording, shall be named so as to provide continuity of name. I mean, that is just open for all sorts of interpretation.
Well, that's so that you don't have, one block is named Main Street, the next block is named Second Street, the next block is named Magnolia Street. If the street is continuous, we're going to make sure that the name is continuous. That's, that's the kind of...
And how many of those streets in three cities have had that problem?
Yeah.
So, then we, I guess, are we then saying we would take limitations on names, no living or people out?
Well, you can do that, that's certainly...
My, my recommendation is we, we limit names at the planning director's discretion with an appeal process to planning and zoning, if, if, if they feel that the planning directors, you know, planning director really hates tight rules, and so they say no to that street, but it fits with whatever they're doing for whatever reason, and they can appeal it.
Yeah, and gives, it gives him the discretion of what's going on culturally, if we've got something that last year was an issue, this year it's an issue and the name's on there, it gives him the flexibility.
To me, it minimizes, it minimizes roadblocks to getting it, getting the process approved, but it gives us discretion to knock those out, and then there's a, an appeal process.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
So, does, so is, let's say, once the names of the subdivision, streets are given to the city, then the city does what with them to make sure? Do you have a nine-one-one coordinator you work with in the county that basically runs them through and make sure that there's not any, okay, so that's...
Actually have a really cool program that looks at the phonetic recent line of the streets to make sure that they're not...
You don't want Main, this Main Street and Main, the State Street, that sound exactly the same but are spelled differently, so.
And then Main Drive and Main Court.
Yeah, and we have a naming convention for that, too, the courts versus...
You're describing Phoenix or Arizona streets.
Traffic impact analysis is pretty much as it is now. I was hoping that Wesley was going to rewrite this to come up with a...
Two weeks ago.
Do some of my method of doing TIA's, but some talk about that.
Question, question on that one, on the TIA. Who funds that, the developer or the, okay?
And so, one, probably the biggest change we made to it was reducing the amount of traffic impact that you could have before you have to do an analysis. One major problem we've had is the traffic impact of individual developments don't meet that threshold, but when you group together four or five of those developments, then they can have a significant impact.
So, it's like only the last one or the, the two last ones that go up that really end up having to do?
So, an example would be the Bastrop Station where Fuzzy's Tacos is. They developed that in three separate lots, and individually, they didn't meet the threshold, and so they weren't required to do a, a formal analysis. And this just reduces the threshold that, that they would have to provide that.
The intent...
I mean, right now, Cheryl just, we had, Patrick just brought up a good point. We're an hour and a half, do you want to take a break? Do you want to keep going?
I could use five minutes, but...
Okay, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
A minute break?
Do what you're doing, and then... The TIA's.
Hopefully not.
Don't say anything you don't want to hear, because it's called...
Don't blow it up. Anybody want to early vote count?
Is for, they would still pay for it, but that the city would actually perform the TIA's.
Okay.
Wesley's built this giant traffic model, and it makes more sense for us to be able to just plug things in and out of that, rather than having a consultant start from scratch on, and a lot of times consultants, one, they're trying to please their client, and sometimes they put their blinders on. This way, we would have more control about what the...
Well, an inherent issue with these TIA's is they, they have to make, they're forced to make a lot of assumptions that almost never play out the way you think they are. They have to assume that there's going to be a certain amount of development over a certain time period, and this, the impact is going to happen. Well, I haven't seen one actually develop the way that schedule played out. And so, this, while it doesn't look like there's been a lot of changes, and there hasn't been, but there's still options in there for us to use the, the model that we've been working on developing, and it allows us to use funding from the developer to improve that model and kind of maintain this living model that, that accounts for traffic impacts year over year.
And we're doing our rundown?
Yes.
And the other question I had on the TIA is under five C period of analysis, and I did not see where it said to include non-holiday. Would that be a good idea to not have it conducted on a holiday?
We can put that in there specifically. Normally, that's not, that's just not a standard day to count traffic. Now, I will say, we have gone back and taken special weekend traffic counts. Highway seventy-one sees a huge peak that is actually more, it, the peak period is actually outside of what you would normally think the peak period is. And so, there are times where you would want to get a, a weekend count.
So, I skipped over this because it's basically what you have now. It's just been kind of relocated.
I just knew there was a question on a previous subdivision that was an issue, and I thought maybe you could prevent that from coming up.
Do you get that?
Yes.
Yeah, we know what this is.
We did it ourselves.
I had a question for you at the bottom of six, is, it's about the general policy. Yeah, the general policy, we accept level of C service, why C in that area?
Well, the, it's, it's more of what's considered an industry standard, and there's, many cities actually use a level of service at D, which is, is still considered an industry standard level of service, but I think C is just...
The unintended consequence, if you required level of service A, is you'd end up with big, empty streets, because that's when you get level of service A. You, you have to expect some congestion, so level of C is just kind of a compromise. Most businesses would prefer you have D or E because they want you to slow down and see their businesses. If you're flying by their business at level of service A, you're not likely to stop.
And, and an important reason that this is an important change from what we have today, today it just says you have to maintain the same or better level of service, which means, yes, you might be in places where there might be a level of service A, there's not many of those areas around the city, but it also means if you're at a level of service F, then you don't really have to make many improvements, and you're still at a very low level.
And let's not always push those areas up.
That's right. And so, we'll see, you know, probably more aggressive recommendations because of this than what we see in other areas. One way to think of traffic systems is kind of like a, a utility, maybe talk about a sewer line. You wouldn't make a developer increase the size of the line if there's still capacity there, you know, so it's a kind of...
You're looking at slow.
Yeah, we're looking at that system from a capacity standpoint. How much capacity does that have, and what's the maximum capacity we want to be able to account for?
So, there, you classify streets by their function, so it's called a functional classification, and this basically comes out of your thoroughfare plan. Talks about street cross-sections and right of way. Most of it's in a handy dandy table or two, so I've taken a lot of what used to be in the text, put it in the table, but there's some provisions on how you have to widen right of way at the intersections and stuff like that.
To account for terminally.
Right. The design speeds are in the table, so, street alignment, we want to make sure that you're crossing a creek at as near angles as possible, because that's the most efficient way to do that. Cul-de-sacs need to curve with the topography. You don't want to have a cul-de-sac that goes downhill, because that's where all the water's going to go, is downhill, and whoever's house is at the bottom of that cul-de-sac's going to get it all. So, I put all the streets into these tables, so all the design information in terms of right of way width, pavement width, median width, pavement section, and I'll, Wesley talked a little bit about, we're going to a, a different pavement section, because your current pay, required pavement section is a little weak, and so we're going to a more standard pavement thickness, and, because remember, once, once you build, once the developer builds that street, you get to maintain it for the, for, forever. And so, you don't want to end up with just a, a road base and a couple of inches of hot mix on top of it. We want to make sure that it's designed as if we want it.
And so, our standards today only have one standard pavement section as far as the thickness of the asphalt and the thickness of the base material. And what we're trying to change is the pavement section based on the capacity of the road. And one, one thing I'm also trying to pull some more information together about is taking into account the soil conditions underneath that pavement section, because that can really identify a need to have a different cross-section than what you would normally have if it was a, a more stable soil material.
Question on your table, line fourteen, it says minimum radius for corners, is that what we have today, or is that new? Those numbers, thirty-five foot radius and twenty-five foot radius corners, fourteen?
I think that came out of the text, now, these are, these are for arterials, so the faster you're going and the more likely you get on truck traffic, the bigger the radius that you want to make that corner.
I can't remember if that's in our current state or not.
I, I just, that could be one of my hot buttons, is radius corners. I see an awful lot of three-foot radius corners, and it's like...
We don't allow three-foot radius anywhere, e- even, I think, on driveways, we require at least a five foot.
It's kind of one of those things you want to balance, because the wider the radius, the wider or the longer distance a pedestrian has to walk to cross the street. So, you want them to be tight enough to where it forces that vehicle to slow down and, and move through the intersection safely, but then you also don't want it running up on the curb.
Right. And there's still some blanks in the table that I just need to get Wesley to give me a number.
He'll do that in the next two weeks.
Yeah. Yeah. We may literally have to get the ball and chain out.
It's on my list.
Uh, this particular thing just got relocated, so it's not really new. Uh, pavement design, and it references having a soils engineer do the analysis, but so we, we do have some provision if we need more, or in some cases, you can get by with less. The soils engineer goes out and finds that there's, you're sitting on top of bedrock, it doesn't make sense to put additional subsurface on top of the bedrock. Feel free to jump in at any time. Other thing that we've talked about is, instead of just a, one type of asphalt, there are actually different mixes of asphalt, and some give you a much better riding surface, a lot smoother riding surface. So, we've talked about four inches of the coarser asphalt and then a couple of inches of the smoother riding surface on top.
Yep, different, like Dave said, there's a different, what they call just the mixed design, and there's, you know, type D is more of a, more of a riding surface layer, but then there's other types that aren't as smooth, but they provide much more structural stability. And so, many times you'll see streets have multiple layers of different types of asphalt, so they'll have a layer of a type that provides that structural stability, but then it'll be topped with that other mix that provides a, a good riding surface.
There's, you were mentioning different mixes. I know there's one that's designed to reduce the amount of spray coming off tires. Is that something we'd want to consider for city streets, or is that something just let, text that, that should only be freeway or highway type of stuff?
Well, that, that works really well on like state highways where they're higher speed roads, where hydroplaning's a much bigger issue, and, and they, they... And, and they, they have a much bigger need to get that water off the road as fast as possible. And it's just normally with the lower speed roads that we have in the city, it's not, that type of mix wouldn't be an issue.
Again, most of this is out of your, all right. When I presented to council, the one area that I got a lot of pushback on was roundabouts. And I was, I was told by the mayor and the city manager that it'd be over their dead body if we have any roundabouts. Mayor was a little bit more open to at least hearing some evidence. So, I really toyed with whether, should we leave them in or not? I left them in because somebody's probably going to want to try to do it. And at some point in time, we're going to want to, uh, look at it. So, I at least put a reference that if you do a, a roundabout, there's actually a Texas roundabout, uh, guidelines that were put out by UT. And I figure the mayor being a UT grad would at least appreciate UT stuff. And then there's some, uh, national, uh, roundabout designs, so.
What is the, uh, roundabouts? What's, what's the issue?
The feeling was that Texans just don't know how to do them, do.
And then on certain streets.
And so, are we talking Aggies or are we talking?
Now, the legitimate is, you know, the city manager's husband is a truck driver. And if the roundabout's not designed correctly, the truck ends up driving over the median in the middle because there's not enough radius around. But you can design it so that it can handle trucks. And we want to make sure, we're probably not likely to have them in a place where there's a lot of truck traffic anyway. Also, would be a little hesitant to have more than one lane in a roundabout. You can do two lanes or multiple lanes. Matter of fact.
That sounds very scary.
You can do lots of lanes.
Two lanes would be more confusing for.
Yeah.
Has lots of roundabouts now and it's not, everybody's, not the smartest state or even.
From a management standpoint, you eliminate the need for everybody to stop because you've got the curving. It automatically slows everybody down, but you keep moving until you get the person who's afraid to make a decision who just stops and sits in the middle of the road.
We have that now.
Sitting at a four-way stop. Can you tell whose turn it is?
Yeah, four-way stops and stuff. So, it allows you to keep moving, but it, it slows the traffic down because you do have that turning action going on.
I think if they're done right, that they're way safer than, than a lot of.
Efficient.
Yeah, exactly.
We need one here on Main Street.
Well, and, and so, my, my question is, I'm, my, my question, I'm thinking of like areas in town like where we could use them, but this doesn't apply to that, so it doesn't really matter. So, I'm thinking of like what size, what size development would you really need where a roundabout would improve traffic? I mean, like, like think of like something like the size of like Hunter's Crossing, right? Like, there's no place there that a roundabout would make travel more efficient or even. Tom Parks wanted to put some in.
Anywhere you'd have a four-way stop, a roundabout would probably work.
I did a inspection today up in Michael in a new subdivision called Highland, Highland Village or Highland something. And they had roundabouts throughout that subdivision. The streets were kind of wide too. We had talked about the, the width of streets. But there seemed to be, because there's like different sections in the subdivision. So, this was on the main, the main thoroughfare going through in and out from the, uh, from the main highway, from the parkway. It worked well. I mean, there was a lot of people, but it never slowed down except at the roundabout. So, you never had all, everybody sitting at a four-way stop, ready to next, get on a busy highway, so.
See, I grew up in like, so in Vegas, they have some areas where you, you, it's, it's like a three-lane, three-lane road on either side. And they have, you know, roundabouts that are bigger than this room. And those work because you're moving a lot of traffic, a lot of volume. I'm thinking that, you know, if we're trying to save a little bit of time at subdivision or development, you know, versus a four-way stop, how, you know, how efficient, I mean, we're not moving large volumes of traffic. I just don't know.
Different times of day. Mornings and after evenings and school buses.
In the end, where, where most Americans fail to use a traffic or a roundabout is that they treat it like a four-way stop rather than a yield sign.
Exactly, right.
Which is what a roundabout is. So, a worst-case scenario with a roundabout, you get a four-way stop.
Or somebody just keeps going.
And, and, you know, it's a matter of.
Honestly, on a subdivision, I think to answer your question, it would be more for, what do you call it, to enhance the neighborhood, I guess. Yes.
I mean, they, they are nice.
Yeah.
Tree, you can lay a tree.
Honestly, I think that's why they would want them. Because it's up and coming.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think we should ban them.
I don't think we should. I don't wish to put.
Texans can figure it out.
If Georgia, if Georgia. And if there's no truck traffic, it's not a, unless it's construction still in the neighborhood. But if there's not really a, a truck traffic area, big trucks, eighteen-wheelers or dump trucks even.
It's nice just to kind of roll through and just have to worry about stops and the cop parked down the road just waiting for a stop sign.
So, so just a few closing comments. You know, Paris and Rome have roundabouts where they've got, you know, seven, eight lanes going through.
Hi, Penny.
You know, I, I drove through Great Britain for two weeks and only found one traffic signal. Everything else was a roundabout. And in the rural areas, a lot of times the roundabout was just a pole in the middle of the intersection and you drive around the pole.
That's awesome. Let's do that.
As, as an extreme. Yeah. As an extreme, if you ever want to Google Swindon's Magic Roundabout, that's actually a big roundabout with five roundabouts inside of it and then another roundabout going counter to all the others. And it works supposedly. But just, uh, ju- just for laughs, you can kind of take it like that. A bit of trivia, uh, there's a difference between a roundabout and a traffic circle. You know, Texas built traffic circles in the forties and fifties and, you know, they didn't work. A roundabout, whoever is in the circle always has the right-of-way. In a traffic circle, that's not always the case. Sometimes if you're in the circle, you have to stop to give the right-of-way to somebody entering and exit. So, in a roundabout, person inside always has the right-of-way and then people know when they can come in or, or go out. But let's move on otherwise we can talk.
Talk policy also.
We want to leave that in there as well.
Okay. I want to make sure that what we're kind of adopting as a policy, that there'll be no new private streets. Everything would be a public street. And a couple of reasons why. One, a lot of people like to do private streets because they want to cut corners. They don't want to build to city standards. And then when the street fails, the neighbors say, well, come fix our street, city.
Or take it over.
Right. And then there's also a social equity issue about, you know, why people can go on some people, uh, areas and not others. So, just as a policy.
Is there not a way to mandate private streets be built to city standards?
Yeah, you could do that.
This is one that I personally have always, since it came up, I've always had like a little issue with it because it's like if, if a developer wants to come in and build a community that they want to build because they identify a need in the community and they think they can sell, you know? If it's not a neighborhood that's, you know, you know, there's not through streets, it's just, you know, on the edge of town and somebody wants to build it, I just don't, I just don't see the, the desire to, the need to tell them like, no, we don't want that. I get the social equity part of it, but.
If, if you do private streets, then you'd, you'd want to make sure they're built to your standards. You'd want to have some control over the gate. Because the police and fire, first responders usually do that with an OX box. But that does take time to get out of the truck, open the OX box and open, open the gate up. In reality, a lot of fire trucks will just drive right through the gates and.
You want to make sure they're maintained. But most, most, nine-in-one call center will have gate codes for that too. I've never ran a call on a, on a gated community where we didn't have a gate code that we couldn't get. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm a big private, I'm a big private property rights person. So, the developer's like, hey, we see a need and we think we can do it, I just don't.
And then you have to provide provisions of what if half the community wants the city to take it over? And how do, how do you address those issues of, you know, will the city take it over? Or under what conditions would the city take it over?
I like to take the position of private streets. I've seen more neighborhoods where the developer abused it. And what you ended up with was substandard streets, undersized streets. And it's just, it's a nightmare that the people who end up living there have to deal with. And it's like, it's one of those things, if we can prevent that, so we don't have to deal with it.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked the question, like, is there a way to mandate, you know? You can do this, but they're going to, the city streets are going to be built to these standards. That doesn't change.
I just think your utilities are also running within that private, you know, if you form a private right-of-way, I guess, it's, you'd have to deal with the utility assignments.
So, if we're, if we are eliminating private streets, does that mean we are eliminating gated communities?
That's what it is.
It does allow for special.
Because you can't, you can't gate a public street, so, yeah.
Right. But so, where I'm trying to go with this is, I agree. I mean, we are going to have a tsunami uproar here. And there will be developers that will come in that will absolutely want to have a gated community. I mean, that's big.
What I think is, is eventually we are going to ax the colony. And the colony is gated and with gated communities inside gated communities. And so, uh, my fear is that if that becomes the only place in the city that we have gated communities, that you're going to, I just, in the interest of inequity, if there's another developer that wants to come in and build something similar, but maybe not at the price point that those homes are at or something like that. I just think if you're not in the middle of the city, you know, you're not in the middle of, of the city building a gated community, but if you're on the outskirts of town or something and you want it to do it, and the developer's identified a need and thinks that they can sell something like that, that, you know, that for me, it's a, that's a private property right type thing. That if they think they can do it and it works and the city streets are built to the same standards as everything else, that's, that's me.
What about maintenance of those streets? Because that's the other thing I'm thinking of thirty down, years down the road, that they want the city to take them over, but they didn't maintain them. HOA didn't maintain it. I guess this doesn't take them over.
I mean, I mean, even, even on a, even with a private development like that, you'd still have to approve HOA, what were you talking about earlier, HOE restrictions and need restrictions and stuff like that, so.
Typically, you would require the HOA to put aside money each year based on the frontage to have a pot of money to be able to fix the street if it failed five, ten years down the road.
If they do though, because a lot of times they, they don't do that.
Well, Tehesean Village is a little bit different because that's a taxing entity that they decided to create to make up for the developer's downfall way back when.
They still not pick some streets.
They do have special just, or special considerations that can be approved by city councils.
I was with a, a landowner and a developer who were looking at property on North Gone Street for condos. And they, it needed to be a gated community.
Well, you could do it in that case because those condos are set up as, uh, like one private lot. And then they are able to file a, I'll just call it a condo plan. But you're able to kind of develop that as a private development that the city doesn't maintain anything inside the, inside the development. It's all capped and the public service ends at the, kind of at the property.
But it's developed with a site plan, not individual.
You've got the access road parking. You've got multiple buildings, but that road in there belongs to that entity, the condo or townhouses. It's, like you said, it's at one parcel and the road in it is just everybody's overgrown driveway.
Do any of our apartment complexes have gates? That would be the same.
This one does. There's one over here that does.
Construction's going to have gates.
The one over there.
One is, one isn't. Would that, that wouldn't be the same thing as a gated community in the sense?
Well, that's, it's all private property at that point. There's no public right-of-ways inside of the.
Okay.
And it's not multiple property owners within the gate, so.
If you all want to consider private streets, I can bring you some language that addresses most of the concerns that you brought up.
Because if the developer's willing to go and do all of that extra work and.
That's, that's my thing. If you're willing to, if you're willing to build the streets to city standards, if you're willing to put your, your CCNRs in such a way that, you know, you're allocating money, if the developer's willing to, you know, front some money to, to maintain those, I just don't see, you know, if they're willing to go through all that and they still want to do it and they think there's a need and they think there's a, you know, that they can sell homes doing that, then.
I, I mean, I'm in agreement with you. If it's outside the city, out, down three oh one somewhere, and there's a big piece of property, three oh four, and there's a big piece of property out there.
Why don't you bring us some language and we can consider it?
I think there's a lot of people that are interested.
Okay.
Don't come in the city and try to knock my house down. Build a gated community.
I kind of want to back up from, from the, the private street ones up there to three, where you talk about cul-de-sac and we put a length of two hundred feet on there.
Yep.
Where did two hundred feet come from? Why two hundred, not five hundred or a thousand or? I know we don't want to have cul-de-sac, but why did we say we'll go two hundred feet?
Just as a, a design approach to minimize the length. You know, there's nothing wrong with short cul-de-sacs. It's when they become long cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, it's when they, you get these half-mile-long cul-de-sacs that are a problem. I was just wondering why we picked two hundred and.
It was to minimize the length and then minimize the number of homes that would actually front on that cul-de-sac.
Okay. So, what, two hundred feet's what, about six homes deep?
About five forty, forty-foot lots.
So, are SF seven lots sixty feet wide?
Sixty by one ten.
Maybe three or four.
Okay, I'm just thinking of the street. Because I live on one, I'm just thinking how long it is. We got, we're five houses deep.
It's, it's, we're not talking two hundred at the perimeter, right? I know you just had it as a measurement.
Okay.
So, just, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to, thanks.
Do you all want something else?
No, that sounds like something we already discussed.
Yeah.
I think I mentioned we're bringing back alleys primarily to address those forty-foot lots because we don't want the entire front of the house done made by a garage. So, if you've got forty-foot lots, actually, I think it's if it's less than sixty-foot lots, you have to have rear access through an alley. Alleys are public. Streets, they're just to a different standard. And cities kind of got away from alleys for a number of years.
But this is proposing bringing those back.
Well, it also helps with your drive, you know, when you get those narrow lots, they're just driveway after driveway. And it really affects how much parking you can have on the street.
And the goal with this is to not put garages in the front because garages with houses, or houses with garages in the front don't, uh, support that whole community feeling, right?
It's home form-based coding, it kind of allows you to go there. The dirty nasty stuff, the garbage and all that stuff sits in the back of the house.
Look, I'm, I'm rather curious because someone brought this up today. What the crime rate is like when you have people being able to move up and down those alleys and no one, and not be visible from the street, whether there's impact that way?
There can be depending on how it's designed. And actually, that's a good argument for having auxiliary dwellings or garage apartments back there because then you have eyes back there.
And lighting would be a factor too, right?
Right.
You, you said that alleys are built.
But you could have some of the same problems in a public street that's not visible either.
And if you, if, if you can't, won't, won't name names, but if you have a two-car garage and you have to walk around the back of the garage to get to the front door, do you really see what's going on in the street?
Or your driveway?
You can't look at your house and see what's going out there.
And you said the alleys are built to a different standard as like a regular street. So, is it asphalt or is it dirt?
It's still asphalt and concrete, but it's only sixteen feet wide.
Okay.
Is that, is that why they have, like the trash trucks?
So, normally, they're like a one-way alley, so you wouldn't have two-way traffic?
But two, two cars can pass at sixteen feet. It'll be a little tight. And if it was a duly pickup, you might not get by it.
I, I lived in Plano for ten years. Alleys were.
They did?
Yeah. Plano loves alleys.
Yeah, driveways doesn't, uh, I don't know that we added a whole lot more to that. Added a minimum spacing?
I didn't see that section. Location. There it says driveway provided minimum fifteen feet between property line and garage door.
Right.
Full-size pickups almost twenty feet long. So, with that, we wouldn't be able to, and everybody's got pickup trucks these times, put a pickup truck in the driveway. Should we extend that to at least twenty feet?
You could.
Where are you looking at? I'm missing it.
Location.
Location. Eighteen feet to the left of the alley.
Yeah, if you're concerned about the pickup blocking the sidewalk, then, yeah, you'd probably need more.
And that's just a regular pickup, that's not getting into the full beds and the duly caps, and those things are twenty-two, twenty-four feet. But just a regular one, and actually, it's nineteen to eight inches or something like that.
Well, in most cases, the front yard setback's gonna be twenty foot anyway.
Yeah, cause I, that's what I was looking at, because I know the setbacks there, but then we say this here, should we maybe line those two up? Do we say twenty-five, twenty-five on everything? You know, cause you have twenty-five foot setback, and we say the driveway's twenty-five, it's just the eighteen foot caught my attention again, because with that pickup truck, it's down.
Just consistency, whatever that number is.
Oh, there's some more chocolate.
That bucket's kind of inch towards me, oh.
Um, you say residential driveway serving two-car garage, carport or storage here, shall not, shall not be less than eleven feet?
In width.
In width, two-car garage is sixteen feet wide.
Not if you do a tandem garage, though.
But this is the minimum, it'd be eleven foot minimum, and not more than twenty-four feet, so most, most of the time, they're gonna be twenty-four foot wide. But we don't want them to put in a six-foot driveway.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, is a six, like, well, if you got a tandem. Put a standard garage side-by-side as a sixteen-foot door, wouldn't you want that to be at least, the driveway, at least the width of the garage door?
Well, if it's set back far enough, you could still have a one drive-in.
Yeah, that, that was the one that just jumped out, and it'd be working with. About, yeah, twenty-four. I wish I had twenty-four foot one, right?
Okay, what next?
You had something down there that you almost got to.
So, we do have provisions, uh, for medians, and what I have in here is that we don't want medians unless we specifically require it for traffic control purposes. A lot of developers like to put medians in, and, you know, I actually like medians, but there is a cost to maintaining a median, so, just, just keep in mind, if you have a lot of medians, we're putting a burden on the city taxpayers usually to take care of it.
Could you put a median in if the HOA was responsible for maintaining, or because the fact that it's a public street, it would have to go?
Well, it becomes a little difficult, but you, yeah, you can try, and it actually says, or I thought it did say something to that effect somewhere, maybe I took it out.
I would think that problem you might get with, with that is, if the HOA's not maintaining it, you know, how do we, what do we force them to do? When the city sues the HOA, and then we end up in that hole.
So, an example would be in Pecan Park, when you go through the main entrance, that, where the entrance sign is, and the flagpole and everything, that's actually carved out as a reserved lot that the HOA's responsible for maintaining, so the public right-of-way kinda includes the pavement around that.
But none of the vegetation or the signage or anything?
So, just raising the issue about how we feel about medians.
I like medians, cause they're pretty, you know, it's a great space and flowers, but you, you make a point that if.
Public Works doesn't like to maintain it.
Right, no, and I get that, so.
And you certainly don't wanna, I've seen some cities where they make them pave over all the medians, and that's not attractive, that's not attractive.
And even if you paint it green, it's still different. Yes, I've seen it.
I think that's okay with the way you have it written, it is what it is, it's, it's a cost issue.
Okay.
We have lots of money, make everything really beautiful, but.
I did correct that Aladdin is a, a proper noun, it's a, and it's a registered trademark, so.
We, we, Trey actually ordered new street signs, so we might be able to include some of that in there.
Okay. On sidewalks, I added a provision, we, you know, we want sidewalks in our subdivision's. Developers don't like to build sidewalks, with the argument being that the home builders are just gonna tear them up as they build a home, so they typically wanna build the sidewalk when they build the home. What you don't want is a situation where not all the homes got built, and you end up with gaps in the sidewalk.
Well, another good example of that is in Riverside Grove, there's reserve areas that don't have a house in that area, and so if, if the developer doesn't build that, there's not a home builder to build that connection.
And they're on both sides of the street.
And so what we've typically done is, during the construction plan process, they detail which sidewalks are going to be built by the developer, and which ones are gonna be wait, um, delayed or postponed until the, the home builder, which you've got.
So what I've got in here is a, basically a sidewalk bond, which allows the home builders to put in the sidewalks, but at the end of four years, we, the developer's responsible for putting in the rest, and there's a bond set aside, it's basically twenty percent of the cost of the sidewalk, you know, with the assumption that eighty percent will have been built by then, um, so, that's.
I've got a question, one, on one D, it talks about the width of sidewalks, is that new? It talks about the fact that the minimum, minimum width is five feet, or six feet if it's placed back.
The five feet is new, but, because originally, in residential areas, we allow four-foot sidewalks.
So that is new, yeah.
The six-foot width in commercial areas is, is the same.
Well, what about a provision that allow, you know, that, like, you can't have a minimum sidewalk length of X, Y, Z, so they'd have to build them in chunks? I mean, they wouldn't have to build all of them, but they could build them in chunks, so it's like, you know, no less than a hundred feet, so, you know, we're not ready to build all the way out here, but we can't just build thirty or forty feet of sidewalk, we have to go, does that make sense, or is that complicated?
I understand what you're saying, I'm not sure how you would enforce that, so.
Never mind.
It's kind of probably more of a financial thing for the developer, when, where does he wanna put the cash down, pour the concrete? What's the best way for him to pour the concrete?
Okay.
Developer doesn't really wanna pay for the sidewalks up front, but he probably would be willing to put up the bond for.
Sidewalk bond is, I assume, typical in other areas?
It's used in other areas, don't know how common it is down, this part of Texas. And the five foot is, you know, in the old days, sidewalks could be as narrow as two or three foot wide, but why do we make everybody walk in single file? You know, usually, if you're walking, you like to walk side-by-side, and five foot's kind of a comfortable, four foot's kind of a minimum.
Yeah, and, and I've noticed in, in communities where they've done the wider sidewalks, they have to, it's getting used more, because it's more comfortable for people to install those.
Those strollers. What's the, what's the definition of a pedestrian trail system? For, uh, one F on the sidewalks? I'm just seeing that instead of, it says, instead of like a traditional sidewalk, you just shoot.
Well, that comes out of your existing ordinance.
So, but what, so I guess what I'm getting, is pedestrian trail system, is that sidewalks in a ETJ, is that what, is that what it's called?
It, it could replace a sidewalk, rather than having the sidewalk run down the side of the rural road, you could have a pedestrian trail that might deviate from that.
So we do that in the colony, but there's areas of the colony that don't have sidewalks along the road, but they've submitted a, an extensive trail system plan that provides.
They have like a trail system, like I, I walk out and I'll exercise, but none of the houses in there have sidewalks.
That's right, and so they rely on that internal trail system that runs in between the lots, there was.
Yeah, but that's more like a, like a hiking bike trail versus like a, versus like a way for pedestrians to move about the community. Yeah, I mean, it's, so.
Yeah, I think one of the other things is probably the street framework wise, so you're walking down, it's.
I'm just, again, the ETJ, in my head, the ETJ is something that at some point, we're going to annex, that's the whole idea, so if we, if we end up having a number of subdivisions go in, in the ETJ, do we want crushed, you know, crushed granite or whatever else in lieu of actual sidewalks? That's kind of my thought, cause once we annex it, then, you know, I, I would assume that that trail type of trail system requires maintenance, just like anything else, but would be more of a maintenance issue than concrete, which is just, you know, water gets in, it rains, and everything gets cleaned off of it versus it being washed out.
Well, in the colony, trail system, we got now, I gather, the HOA pays for the maintenance of that.
Mm-hmm. So, but again, it's not like a, it's, when I think of like trail system, I think of like, let's get out inside nature and exercise and walk around, I don't think of like conveyance pedestrians amongst, you know, the different parts of the, of the community, so.
You're not gonna take the trail system necessarily, go down to the pool or the club house or.
Right, yeah, I mean, so.
Well, remember that this is an option.
Right.
May substitute a trail system in lieu of the traditional sidewalks, so, you know, if they do a trail system, we'd wanna make sure that it connected with as many lots as possible, so that you still have the benefit of a sidewalk without just being a sidewalk.
I've been, I've been visiting like houses like a hundred feet apart, with just like crushed granite trails running along the street, it just sounds ugly. I mean, it just, it sounds ugly, and something that, you know, had to get good rain, it's, you know.
Doesn't have to be, there are actually some pretty high-end subdivisions with exactly that, so.
They've got the wide streets and the little, little concrete scrapes and the swales for the drainage, and the houses are two hundred feet apart, yeah?
What does maintenance on something like that look like? Do we know? Cause again, I'm thinking ETJ, we annex, and then all of a sudden, if it, if it's not, there's a sidewalk, there's maintenance in.
Normally, the biggest issue I've seen with crushed granite, if they're, if they're installed properly, they hold up really well, except in areas where they don't accommodate the drainage patterns very well, and you get a lot of washout, they, um, obviously wash out a lot easier than, than a harder surface, but, um, in a lot of areas, they, they do hold up really well if they're built correctly.
Yeah, it's just how well it's designed.
Is there, you know, a, a chance we could see what something that's well-designed looks like? Cause I guess, I guess in my head, if that's something that we would consider, we would want to be real specific about the design, so that it looks good, and it holds up well.
Well, and that could be something that you could look at during, say, the preliminary plan process, they could show how everything's going to be connected and built.
So is, is this a, they may do just period, or they may do what with permission?
They're required to do sidewalks, but they may substitute a trail system in lieu of the sidewalks.
Right, but they don't need approval, like, there's no set standard for that, right? As long as it's constructive and alternative material, and, you know, like, you know.
Would you maybe, could we maybe add, like, with the approval of planning and zoning commission? And that way, we could require them to submit, say, a trail system plan, or.
That would be.
Submit a plan for what their alternative proposal is.
I guess that would give, whatever that current commission is, the chance to evaluate, you know, like, okay, we, we think this is stellar, it looks good, it's solid, it looks great, or this looks really cheap, or doesn't look like it's gonna hold up, it looks like it's gonna be a problem in the future, and, so.
Okay, we'll add that, right?
Got it.
Richard, what next?
Access, the four B, is that new during the building renovations, remodeling, or why didn't you just do driveways and parking lots?
Four B, could be some more context.
In, in the parking lot section.
Q, Q four B?
That, that seems to be something, it's, I don't know, that just caught my attention, is, you know, when you go in to do a renovation, and all, you've got a lot of those stuff, basically, grain driveways have been up to the standards, the radiuses, the widths and all that, is that new, or is?
Well, this is, this is new to your ordinance.
Okay.
I agree with everything in that, except for the remodeling.
Okay.
Remodeling, remodeling requires a permit, what's the dollar amount that requires a permit?
Everything requires a permit.
Different things get triggered.
Depending on the size of what you're doing and stuff like that, I just think.
Normally, like fifty percent of the building area, that's your, that's your.
I'm just thinking, like, even a total gut, you're not really changing the footprint of, of the house, and so too, you know, what if you get in a position where you can't meet current, but, you know, but if you're adding an addition, if you're making just the footprint change, that would make sense to.
Only one of the footprint changes triggers that.
Cause you've got the word major addition, or remodeling, you could say major addition, is that also major remodel?
Yeah, I think our site plan, what does our site plan ordinance say, it's like a major or significant, um, alteration to the exterior, or.
Yeah, that change in use, change in sight, yeah.
Changing it to, if the footprint changes, is that what we're doing?
That usually would trigger it.
New construction, or major additions that affect the footprint of the house, something along that, or remodel, it changes the footprint.
And I understand the head-end parking is on the public street portion, so, now, diagonal parking or parallel parking is okay, it's just, head-end parking causes a lot more traffic problems than the other.
Did you bring that up, cause there's that, those new buildings down there off Main Street with the head-end parking, every time I drive by there, I'm waiting to see who gets it first.
Oh, the, those new buildings?
Yeah.
Uh, I think we were talking about some diagonal parking.
Yeah, we're changing there.
The apartments, yeah.
Added a provision here for street trees. So, street trees, it's typically, in single-family, it'd be one tree per lot, in multifamily, uh, in commercial, it's one tree every seventy-five linear feet. Uh, spacing for utilities and root barrier systems, root barrier system keeps the roots from getting into the underground utilities. There's a list of tree species, if there's any of those species that you don't want along your streets, or if you want something else, we can talk about it.
Just a question, how was that list compiled, on what basis?
It was stolen from another city.
I didn't know if he's primarily natives, or, um.
Not necessarily, but most of those, I think, are, none of them jump out to me as non-native.
We took out the Chinese tallow, that's on our current list.
You want the male ginkgo tree in there too, that's, that's real, especially in the downtown area, that's really.
And gray myrtles would be considered a shrub and not a tree, okay.
They don't provide the shade and the canopy that you would typically want in a street tree.
A lot of cities went Bradford Parish for a long time, but they've realized that that was a big mistake, so. Is a provision for diversity, you don't wanna have the same species everywhere, so you wanna alternate it by street if possible?
If you get a disease, like oak wilt, it'll take out every tree at the same time.
Monoculture, I think.
That's what we're here for.
So, lots and lots, and I talked to you about the sixteen hundred foot block parameters, so that's, you've seen that before. We've reduced the rural block lengths, um. Lots, let me see, uh, that's all formatting, make sure that every lot has access to a public street, so we don't have, we've got some issues now, where we've got lots that don't have access. Lot size, and we're using the one acre as kind of the baseline for the ETJ, based on, um, the study that Wesley was gonna do before he left, but I guess it's not gonna happen.
Our, our flag lot, flag lots are just in here somewhere.
Yes, flag lots are prohibited.
Thank you for putting that in there.
Let's see where that is.
It's in section five. Second sentence, paragraph five.
Flaggers should be prohibited, I see it.
Well, we got some numbering issues here. There's, there's two fives.
Yeah, you started over.
Two fives and two sixes.
The five before the six.
Yeah.
The under five.
Uh, took out the section on corner lots, it's a good thing to have, but it really didn't fall in the subdivision ordinance, it really goes in the zoning ordinance, so that'll come out. Lot orientation, building lines, and the building lines is primarily for areas in the ETJ, because we don't have zoning out there to, to govern that. Couple of new items, uh, one is orientation to creeks, uh, one thing that a lot of cities do is they turn their backs to the creeks and rivers, and so all of it becomes is just a place to throw trash, and nobody takes ownership of the area, so we're requiring that at least fifty percent. So we're requiring that at least fifty percent of that frontage in a subdivision has to be facing the creek or facing the river as opposed to backing up to the river. Uh, same thing on public parks. Uh, I've seen some situations where people have backed all the houses up to the park and then it becomes the, the crime issue because there's no eyes out there. And nobody knows it's really there, so it doesn't get used. So, now developers don't like this because they want to have at least a row of houses on each side of the street so they can spread the cost. And so if you require that one side be open, they've got to absorb the cost of that street on that single tier of lots, but you can work that into your pro forma and get that to work out.
Does this, and I'm just making sure I'm understanding this, this doesn't allow a developer to face the house, like, the lot touches the creek and they face the creek, so the street is looking at the back of a house, right?
No, it's.
Okay, I'm just making sure that I.
There, there would have to be a street.
First time I read it, I was like, what are you saying?
Well, we have other rules that don't allow the back of a house to back up to the.
And that's what I'm getting is, is whether they can flip them. I'm just making sure that I'm reading it correctly so we don't end up with a development or, or all the methods.
Essentially, what you're saying in there is, is the front door of the house has to face the street or has to face the park so people can see what's there.
That people on the street can see the park.
It's basically a street, one side park, one side houses.
Yeah.
Oh, street monuments and property markers, if you like, into exciting stuff like that. So, the last big thing is drainage. And this is a new approach to drainage. Uh, it relies a lot on what's called the Integrated Stormwater Management Program, which is actually done up in more central Texas, but I've kind of adapted it to at Works and Bastrop. There's actually more technical information in your ordinance, trying to get away from having to refer back to a lot of manuals, even though there is some stuff that you refer back to, but you refer back to is on the internet, so it's freely available. You don't have to, to buy anything. The main thing is to plan for a variety of storms, so you're not just planning for the hundred-year storm or the two-year storm. You've got to plan for the two-year, the twenty-five, fifty, and the hundred-year storm, because each of those, you know, you could design a detention pond for the hundred-year and you end up with a big pipe. And during the fifty-year flow, it just goes right on through and floods everybody as if there was no protection. So you often come up with some pretty complicated multi-stage outlets so that you handle the two-year storm with one outlet, and the twenty-five-year storm with a little different approach, and the hundred-year at a different approach. Are there any examples in town that do that now?
I would probably say over where, um, in Jackson Square, kind of behind CBS, they, I think their detention ponds designed for the twenty-five-year and the one-hundred-year storm. And like Dave said, when you, when you restrict it by just one single pipe, you can get post-development peak flows that are higher than those pre-development flows for storms that are lower than a twenty-five-year storm. So you could have a ten-year storm come through, but there's twenty-five-year peak flows coming out of that pipe because it's only, it's only restricting it up to that twenty-five-year peak flow. And so, I'm trying to think of a way to explain it. You know, if you think of the peak flow that a twenty-five-year storm generates, say it's fifty, well, if that ten-year peak flow is, say, thirty-five, it can still go through at that full thirty-five cubic feet per second rate when that pre-developed peak flow might have been ten. And so you, you, you can accommodate as many, as many storms and you could still see flooding impacts for smaller, smaller storms.
Now, just a comment on section eight, item six, finding a zoning commission is not to recommend anything that doesn't have a floodwater plan, so I've got a six of that in there to remind us that when we see planning for them, make sure that that gets handled.
Well, we'll tell you. We just don't want you to approve something that we told you not to approve.
And, yeah, and the planning department will determine adequate?
City engineer will.
Not Wesley.
Somebody much smarter than I am.
This, this is probably the most
Controversial.
Not controversial. This, this is a section that's on the minds of most, the most people in this area.
And I think the bottom line, and I hope Wesley agrees, I think this gives you a lot more teeth to provide a lot more protection to people than your current ordinance provides.
And when we have public input, this is a section that we want to allow lots of time for discussion because there are people that are concerned about what's going to happen down the road. And we need to make sure that everybody understands that we're looking at what's going to happen down the road and we're planning for it.
So, we're looking at four different storms to design for. Uh, we've included what I'm calling the water quality storm. Even though technically Bastrop is not required to consider water quality under current state and federal law, I think eventually you probably are going to have to address it somehow, and besides, it's the right thing to do. So, the issue is that what's on the street and what's on your roof is not pure. When, when the water hits that, it's going to wash everything. It's that dirt and metals and oil into the creek. And we want to try to capture and, and so that it doesn't end up in your drinking water supply down the road, so.
Well, it also keeps the system working more efficiently, so when we get these big storms, there's not a lot of debris and sediment that's been allowed to get into the system and clog it up.
The stream bank protection or the two-year storm, that's roughly equivalent to channel capacity. So a natural channel typically has about, capacity for about a two-year storm. Anything above that will spill out onto the adjacent floodplain, and naturally, that's just what happens. So we want to kind of plan for how do we regulate that two-year storm. The reason being, in a lot of urban areas, what happens is all the impervious area increases the volume of that two-year storm. And so what you get is a lot of incising and cutting of the channels, so you see a lot of channel erosion. So we're trying to protect the two-year storm so that we, we try to avoid that as much as possible. The flood mitigation storm, the hundred-year storm, we're all familiar with what the hundred-year storm is. That's what FEMA is based on. The conveyance storm is just kind of a midpoint to make sure that water that gets out into the floodplain, we can regulate, um, before it gets to the hundred-year flood level. There's a, design process requires some site analysis. A lot of this comes out of your, some of, some of this comes out of your current ordinance. And then, I think I'd mentioned before, one of the things is to try to get drainage earlier into the process. As I said, a lot of developers, they'll lay out as many lots as they can and then they figure out how to drain the project. Uh, this is trying to get people to look at the drainage system first, and perhaps they can protect a lot of the natural drainage and save a lot in terms of infrastructure just by being more careful about where they put the houses.
Is that a current order?
It's not real easy to read, and it kind of jumps around some, so. Part of what this is trying to do is trying to organize things and put all the drainage basically in one part.
We had ADHD when we put the last one.
Talks about design criteria, about what kind of hydraulic, hydrologic model you should use. Uh, a lot of engineers like to use the rational method, uh, which is a real simple, it's called Q equals CIA. It's just a function of the, the drainage area, rainfall intensity, and a runoff coefficient, which works well in small watersheds, but it doesn't work well for bigger watersheds. So this kind of puts some limits on, uh, how big an area you can use for the different kinds. Uh, anything bigger, we typically like to use the unit hydrograph method, um, and I realize that a lot of this is probably.
Just, I was just joking. You need to figure out how you're going to explain it at a public meeting.
Well, the biggest difference between the rational method and the unit hydrograph method is the rational method does not factor in the volume of water. It's only factoring in the peak capacity of a pipe that can carry. Uh, the unit hydrograph method actually takes into account not only the peak flow, but also the volume of water that's building up. And so it helps you really look at where that water's going to get to as it gets deeper and deeper in the system. And so it's a much more, um, complicated and accurate way of analyzing the, the runoff conditions in that, in that development.
And we're not expecting everybody to understand all the hydrology and the engineering, but we want to provide the guidance for the engineers who are actually doing it to make sure they do it the way that best protects us.
Will they take into consideration development or impervious ground cover, that, impervious construction that's taken place and how it affects the water flow, incapacity and, and all that good stuff?
That affects the runoff coefficients that they end up putting in.
That's what I meant, yeah.
What he said.
You know what he said.
You just say that.
Uh, we've put in some, some, uh, new curves for, uh, calculating the rainfall intensity, and then I think somewhere else I actually have in here what the actual amount is. So this is a number of inches of rainfall in Bastrop County for, uh, two years over, you know, one minute. One of the things I need to do is to redo this table because Bill Gates doesn't like to show the entire number for some reason. So, for example, a, oh, a one-hour storm, a two-year, one-hour storm is one point eight inches of depth. Up to a hundred-year in one hour is four and a half inches of rain.
And these are higher than our current rates. Dave, because you, you updated the, um, the next, the previous page. These are actually updated on newer rainfall.
Right, the twenty fifteen.
Maybe I'm misreading, but the way I understand it is the city can, the city's drainage system currently can handle up to three inches an hour.
Yeah, that's a good.
If it's more than three inches in an hour, that's when we have a flooding amendment, correct?
And storm sewers are all crowded at the same time.
So how, so how does that play into what I'm looking at here? Or is this something that should be over my head?
That would be, no, that would be this. Um, so like this would be one point eight inches in an hour. So if you're getting, that, that would be the equivalent of one point eight inches per hour.
That's like a two-year, two-year flood.
That would be a two-year storm, or if we get, you know, if we start getting like that over three inches, that would be, you know, once we start getting a twenty-five-year storm over sixty minutes.
That's a, when we start talking about drainage, that's the only thing I ever, I mean, this is all new stuff, so we would, I mean, obviously it changes, but the only thing I ever think about or go back to when I start thinking about drainage in the existing parts of the city is that if we can't move that three inches each hour, we end up right back where we're at, you know, the last few times it's happened, so.
And that's how, you know, we can, that three inches, you know, we can come, a five-year storm can come over, you know, six hours.
In previous discussions we had, you know, months past where we were being educated about the city's drainage, I think for, you know, this moment here, I seem to recall the same thing, that the city's fine as long as we're getting like two inches or less per hour. You know, we're getting more than two inches, we're flooding. You know, so by reading this table, anything, a ten to twenty-five-year storm, we can't really handle.
Well, a lot of it has, I mean, if we get three point four inches over one hour and that's all we get, that's, we can handle that. You know, the way I've tried to explain it is if you think of a five-gallon bucket and you've got water in it, there's, there's kind of two things that define how the water gets out of the bucket. How much water is in the bucket and how fast you pour it out. And so, you know, for comparison, you know, we had Hurricane Harvey where we had twenty inches of rain
Twenty inches over, over day.
Over three days. And so it's like having a ton of water in the bucket but pouring it out.
But what, I guess the answer to the question is, what, what kind of storm event can the city handle just generally?
Well, just different areas are different, but.
I just, downtown, you know, right here, I mean.
Wesley, what was that Halloween? Wasn't Halloween when we got like so much rain?
Well, Halloween of twenty fifteen, we got a little over seven inches over, I think it was nineteen hours or something. But the Memorial Day flood of twenty sixteen where we had the most damage, we got six inches over two, yeah, it was.
Two or three hours.
Yeah. So it was like having a bunch of water and dumping it out really quick. So, that's, that's what can kind of overwhelm our, our system.
That's about three inches an hour.
Right, but, but you also have to think, how many hours do we have that? So if, if we get three inches in one hour and then it kind of tapers off.
It's probably as bad as three inches after a previous ten inches over, over a week.
Which that's what happened in Memorial Day of twenty fifteen. We actually didn't get that much rain when we saw those flooding impacts, but because we'd gotten so much continuous rain the two weeks before that, the ground was so saturated and it was, it was, you know, it might as well have been flowing over pavement because it was so saturated.
Just, Tom, sorry.
I was just curious as to, because I always thought we were designing around twenty-five-year storms was the city's kind of infrastructure, and it seems like it's a little bit less than that based on this table.
Well, that was, that was going to be my question. It's just to dumb it down for me. But what are, what, what level of flood event are we asking new developments, new, new subdivisions to adhere to or be able to handle?
Well, there's different stages, and so the, um, I remember, right, the, the underground piping system has to be designed for the twenty-five-year storm. And it's the twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm. So that's another thing that makes it a little more confusing is you can have different storm events over different time periods, but the, the main design storm that engineers are required to design for is kind of this, this section.
Whatever's in twofour. So, so we're looking at handling seven point and a half inches of water over the course of one day. That's what we're asking subdivisions to adhere to.
But that's handled in the pipe, but then you also have some limits on how much can surface at the top. So if it's surfacing at the street, it can't take up the whole street.
That's right. And that's, that number is designed into the hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm, and there's other requirements. Um, it can, it can build up in the street as long as it doesn't.
The middle's.
As long as you, um, don't take up more than fifteen feet of the street. And so there's.
So are we raising, are, are these standards similar to what's we've used in the past in the current ordinance? Are these elevated?
It's the same standard, but the, but the rainfall rates are higher. And so overall, they're having to design for a higher peak flow.
That's, so.
Does that make sense?
Is that based off data from the last few years that we, that we have collected as a city and are using, or is this some standard somewhere in some lab?
It's data that's been collected by Tech Start and the US Geological Survey.
We just took the old five hundred-year numbers and made up the one hundred-year numbers.
Wes is like, that's really what I do is just, just.
Well, just, just for, um, just FYI, there, FEMA is actually going through and, and is probably going to come out with another update. And from what we've seen in some parts of Texas, those, those twenty-four-hour, a hundred-year depths are going up by as much as four inches. They think they're going to go up between one and two inches in our area. So, but that hasn't been published yet, and so I'm sure once those get published, we can go back and update this.
Talks about time of concentration. I won't bore you with.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
On the document, and I'm looking at the old document, but on the document that you sent out, it actually, however it's formatted, um, when it's printed, I guess, or put in a PDF, it's, uh, splitting up the tables. So I was going to ask, maybe in the new documents, let's not split tables up.
Make sure you got page break.
That might also be because you're viewing it on the iPad.
Well, I agree, but it shouldn't be able to, even if I was viewing it on the iPad.
Yeah, what is finally published, all the tables will be on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be picky, but I was just, once you see them.
What happens is, is we add stuff in and it kind of moves things, rather than try to fix it every time and move things around, we just decided to push it out.
That's fine.
Can I ask one question about this graph that we just looked at here? So when you say FEMA is talking about increasing those numbers, what, how are they determining that? Um, for instance, um, last year, I think it was, there was a lot of, um, water standing in Smithville. And my girlfriend that I work with swears, she's been in that area for a long time, that there's never been flooding there, and she swears the ground is dropping. Is that, is that, is, is that how they, how do they determine that? Because over time, I'm sure that is what's happening. We're not sinking into the ocean, but. We're not sinking into the ocean, but the more and more rain that we get and the heavier it is, it's changing the dynamics of our geography, right?
And so the way, I mean, mainly the, the main source of data is, is rain gauge information. So they have different gauges. We have two or three just in the city where they actually just continuously monitor how much rainfall those gauges record. And so they use that information with just other weather reports and, and other satellite methods. They have all kinds of accounting for that. And then just over the years, they continuously use that information to update what was, what was calculated before. A lot of the technology changes, that's one thing we've seen with our current flood maps. They're based on information that was collected, some of it was collected in the 80s. And so they're going through the process of using the better technology that we have today, as well as trying to account for the level of development that's occurred in the past, you know, 30 years to try to better account for the rainfall that we've, we've been seeing.
Yep. That, I'll just retype the equation because it came out kind of funky before. Some adjustments to the rational method for certain storm events, unit hydrographs. And it talks about ways to treat different storm events. And so for water quality, we're interested in looking at bio-retention or enhanced swales, detention, filters, ponds. You know, most of the ways to treat, you know, water quality, we're interested in what's in the water. And most of what's in the water we're interested is on suspended solids. So the metals and oil and stuff collects on the suspended solids. So if we can detain it and let it drop out, it works. Or if we let it flow through grass and plants, it tends to clear it up as well. So just looking, there's, there's lots of different ways. Didn't spend a lot of time on that because that's, again, not something that you're required legally to do, but did want to put people on notice that we're kind of looking at how you were going to handle those type storms. Talks a little bit about downstream assessments. We're increasing the amount of water, all the runoff, is we're really interested in what's happening downstream. And there actually can be some situations where you don't have to do anything with that because your effect on the downstream flow is so minimal that it doesn't justify the expense of doing detention. So that you actually calculate where the peak discharges occur and, and what the zone of influence is, and then you can actually use that to kind of back out. You know, if you're discharging directly into the Colorado River, having a detention pond there is probably not gonna make a whole lot of difference to what's in the Colorado River. On the other hand, if you're at the upstream end of Piney Creek, having a detention pond up there would make a big difference on the flood heights in Piney Creek. So it's just a way of measuring and looking at all that.
Now, you can also.
This kind of feeds back into something you were talking about earlier. And that's this whole flood management, controlling of water runoff. So by controlling how fast we're feeding it into, whether it's Piney Creek or the Colorado, we can, that's how we would impact the downstream flow. So if we can manage it from the development layout, so it doesn't runoff as fast.
Yeah, the, you know, you build a subdivision, you're gonna end up with more water. But the one thing we can't control is the rate that water goes off. And it's the rate that goes off is what floods, because as the rate goes up high, the flood level goes high, and that's what goes in your living room. So if we can move that rate down and spread it over a longer period of time, you can get more volume through, but you don't have the flooding effects.
But it also comes down to the, the timing. And that's why a lot of times you'll see us recommend you approve plans that don't necessarily have a detention pond right next to the river, because you can sometimes affect the timing so that you might have a storm that comes through town and waters inside the detention pond. A lot of times it's better to let that water just develop and get out, because the more you delay that water getting out, you can actually give time for the river to build up and actually be trying to send water out of the detention pond at the same time the river's trying to flow higher.
So the new development on the 969 colony definitely would be an example.
That's right. Yes, Matt.
And so it's not just the volume of the water, but also the velocity of the water that we're concerned with too. We want to make sure that the velocities don't get so high that they cause a lot of erosion. So that there's some options about how to address stream bank protection, some options on how to address flood mitigation, again, working off that downstream assessment. Then we get into just the design of the specific drainage facilities, what design methods to use, all fairly standard, I think. This is the flow spread limits that Wesley was talking about. So for a collector arterial or thoroughfare, you would allow the water to get, go in eight feet or one travel lane on either side, but that leaves you at least one lane each direction so that you can drive. A lot of people don't realize the street is part of the drainage system. It's designed to carry water, but we want to make sure that we can use, use it at the same time. Now, for a local residence, residential street, it's to be at curb depth or a maximum of six inches at the gutter while keeping one 11-foot travel lane open. If you can't meet that on the ground, then you gotta start looking at an underground storm drain to carry what's over in the above that. Talks about inlets and swales, storm sewer, design frequency, and design criteria. Access manhole spacing. And I have seen some systems where, you know, in a sanitary sewer, you're required to have some manholes every once in a while, just so that you can remove some blockage. And I've seen developers go in on a, a storm drain and not put those manholes in. And storm drains can block up just as bad as a sanitary sewer, particularly if they get a lot of brush and stuff. So this just has maximum spacing and also where there's sharp turns, you'd want to have a manhole. What kind of pipe that we allow? If they want to do an open channel, what the requirements are? If you're gonna have a bridge, how, how big the bridge has to be, what design? So we have 100-year standard for bridges and a two-foot freeboard. Sign frequency for culverts. I realize I'm going fast, but. Drainage channels. Wesley made me put in channels, assinuosity. I think I explained that a little bit last time, so I won't go into, remember, it's the length of the thaw wig divided by the straight line length.
Matt? Dripping Springs requires this, and I think it's a really good idea to avoid having just these straight channels that you end up having scouring issues because of the way the water tries to flood the, this actually requires some meander.
This was in.
Actually, in Los Angeles, you all familiar that there's the Los Angeles River?
Yeah.
Which is just a big, large trapezoidal channel?
Yeah.
They've actually gone back into it and created a meandering river inside it. I changed it to low-fog methods instead of scour. And there's lots of information on open channels. Roughness coefficients based on what the channel's made of, what kind of vegetation. Maximum velocity is based on the plant that you use, so you don't want to have too fast a velocity for a plant that can't hold up to it. Section on, well, there's vegetative covers. Provisions on detention ponds. So a question on detention ponds. Anytime there's open water, it's an attractive nuisance. Some cities require that all detention ponds be fenced. Fenced, a lot of fences are not that attractive. So question is, do you want to have a standard for fencing? Or do you want to have, say, only if it maintains permanent water levels at one or two feet and above, has to have a fence? Do you have any thoughts on fencing?
My concern for fencing is that it gets blocked. Well, mine was it gets blocked with debris and inhibits the flow of water into the detention. Is that?
The lawyer's asking, well, but do we want kids to get in there?
Well, and I, I get that, I'm just saying that.
Can we design retention ponds in such a way that they don't become an attractive nuisance and we don't have to fence them?
I'm sorry, is that anything?
Can we design these retention ponds so when they're in flood stage, they aren't an attractive nuisance? Do we have to fence them?
Well, I think the problem, then, you ended up with something so big and shallow that it just takes up too much area.
Does the city not have qualified immunity for something like that?
I guess, I encourage my kids to go play in detention ponds.
Like at Lowe's, isn't there one huge bin solid where you're?
Right. But that one's also like, you know, 80 feet deep or whatever it is. That would, that's, that's, to me, that's a, to me, that's a fall, a fall risk versus like a drowning thing. But my, my thought, get the liability concern, but if the, if the city were to have qualified immunity for something like this, I don't know.
I mean, it's just building up.
Well, since the attorney's the one that raised the issue, I'd say that we're probably not, don't have full immunity.
Well, the written ask question about design is, like I was in Phoenix, I see a lot of the Phoenix stuff, and they've turned all their flood retention ponds into local parks. When they aren't flooded, they're pipelines. And when they flood, there are 10 feet of water.
And that's the difference between a detention pond and a retention pond.
Would you explain that to me, please?
A detention pond detains the water, but then goes dry. And so most of the time it's dry, so soccer fields or something like that. And then just when it rains, it fills up and then goes back out. A retention pond actually has a permanent pool of water in it, and the detention occurs above that. And that becomes more of an amenity that, you know, people like to look out on a pond and see the water.
Hunter's Crossing would be a retention pond. A detention pond would be like Burleson Crossing.
Okay.
Cause it's dry most of the time.
Right.
I honestly think that they should be fenced if it's a safety hazard.
I think that's a good way to do it. Just say if there's.
I know sometimes on creeks, like on property we have, we built a fence that when water's coming down and debris hits the fence, the fence moves. Oh, I don't know.
It's like a swing gate.
Yeah, exactly. Now, I don't know if that's possible because they're heavy. I mean, if the water's flowing in the.
What, when would you want one versus the other? Or is it just?
Me, detention or retention?
Right.
It's usually the developer would rather have a retention pond because that's more of an amenity. A detention pond is not always very attractive.
So could we, could we just do like retention ponds with the fencing and then detention could be set up, kind of like what we're talking about as far as some type of usable park space or something like that?
Could do that.
Cause if, I mean, if it goes dry, I mean, at, at one point, you just, I don't know.
Unless you're talking about the one at Lowe's.
Exactly. The one at Lowe's, I mean, it's 30 feet deep and it has, it's not just a gradual slope down to the bottom. It actually has retaining walls.
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what a?
Matt lets his kids play in it, but I don't know.
I guess, I guess.
Why would a developer and subdivision have a detention pond?
He's required to hold the rainwater back so that it exits its property no faster than it would be under natural conditions.
It's kind of an intentional restriction.
I don't know that I've ever seen a retention pond with a fence around it. Have you all? I don't know that I've ever seen.
Well, I mean, like, like, the one at the colony has like a fence, but it's like an aesthetic thing, it's not like an actual fence. The other thing I was gonna say is the detention pond over there by Lowe's, like, I've never seen one that deep and that big where it's at, to me, that's an anomaly, not something you would see in a subdivision.
There's the, there's the one up here at the, the, across from Buckets that.
The soccer fields?
No, no, across the apartment complex. They have a pond that's pretty steep as well. It's a pretty significant, it's over right behind the Mexican market, kind of in that quarter of the area. It's, I mean, I think it's fenced as well, but it's, I mean, it's kind of like the Lowe's.
Some of them are definitely a bigger safety issue.
And I've, I've, I've seen a lot of the detention ones, like we're talking about, like where it's a soccer field or baseball field or something where it's usable.
I think when they have that gradual drop, but if they do have that sharp drop off, I think that's when the issues come in.
Yeah, so why don't we try to come up with some criteria for when you might be able to do without a fence?
Is he gonna work on that?
It's on his list.
It's on the.
I mean, you could do like, like you were saying for something earlier where we would have to see the design of a retention pond, because the, no, cause I, I go to Houston a lot, and I don't see them as much around here, still in Houston quite often. And they're usually out, out in the field away from the homes, not so much.
Are you talking like, so fencing required at the discretion of the planning director with appeal to zoning zones I was talking about?
They give us the design. So they, if they want to put a retention pond in, then they give us the specifics where it's gonna be located, et cetera, and then.
So I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I think that, that decision should be the, at the discretion of the planning director. And then if they don't like that, you know, decision, then they can always appeal. I think it's just more efficient that way than trying to have us review every.
Yeah, let, let us try to come up with something.
Really, really quickly, so, you know, a lot of the development, figure developments, you know, in KDM specifically, they've used that retention areas, you know, it's, you know, it's a lake, you know, trails around it. You put a fence around it, you ruin the.
Appeal, matter of appeal.
Sometimes you want it to be more.
You know, so what would be sensible.
Is there, is there the ability to give a developer like double credit for a detention pond plus the park space that they'd be required to have? Where we, where we could help encourage them to combine them and to, and to really utilize the space so that we're not, you know, we're not stuck with like a park and a detention pond, you know, we could, they could design it in such a way that they could be both and kind of, and, and their benefit is they get a little bit more space to develop some more lots on and make some more money. And, I mean, that, that to me sounds like a good.
It makes a lot of sense and that, that's, it's a great approach.
I like that, I think it's a direction we ought to try to, try to.
I mean, it's what Hunter's Crossing does.
Long-term, I think it helps all of us.
Yeah.
Hunter's Crossing system is set up to be an amenity and it provides the stormwater management facilities that they need.
So, so a retention pond is not considered moving water, stagnant basically. So we have lots of retention ponds all over town, and we have West Nile virus, and we have mosquitoes and, I mean.
That, that's the main.
I mean, there's, there's that.
That really gets into the design and you really, if you're gonna have a retention pond, you really want to make sure that the water is, stays deep enough to keep a lot of that from building up. Cause if the water's deep enough, the, what's it called, the photosynthesis or whatever, the, the sun, you know, it, it keeps the water cool enough to where you don't see as many of those mosquitoes and algae develop. And you could put aerators that circulate the water.
That's what, that's what, that's what the colony has, they have that fountain thing.
Yeah. But you also put fish that eat the mosquitoes.
I personally really like to see us push towards retention ponds instead of det, or detention ponds instead of retention ponds and then as a dual-use space.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think that alleviates the need for fencing, it, you know, encourages multiple use of the space we have.
This is mainly just an note from me to, you know, Wesley, because it says, storage facilities greater than 50 acres up here, and then it used to say 50 acres down here and he changed it to five. So we've got a discrepancy.
He's trying to lead in two weeks, leave some stuff like this, just sit in there.
Outlet structures, utility, which is the last section.
There's an end?
So water utilities is mostly stuff that you already had with a little bit of clarification. Provision of fire hydrants, what standards to meet, wastewater, wastewater systems, on-site systems, how you address those, and then private systems, sewer linens, electric TV and cable TV. They were requiring underground utilities to extent possible.
And that's in rural subdivisions too, right?
Yeah. And then streetlights.
What is reconductoring?
What is reconductoring?
Putting new wires in.
Okay.
I have a question about D two A. Make sure I'm reading it correctly. So, we're saying that, are these six thousand volts, are those the big, big honker ones?
Yeah.
Just clarify.
It's not really cost-effective, put those under there?
No, that makes sense.
Those are a lot more than...
So is that a word, reconducting?
It is now.
I was curious. Yeah, there is.
David does we want.
Yeah, it is, it's really a word.
You can add anything to the dictionary in order.
No, I was just looking out to see if it was really the word.
She asked Google.
The first question I've got, the first question I've got on this one is the city's dark sky ordinance, where is that?
It's right at the...
I tried to find it.
It's not called dark sky ordinance. It's our outdoor lighting standards, it's in section thirty-something or other of the zoning code, it's chapter fourteen.
So, it, city's dark sky ordinance, is that your thing?
Well, that's how we refer to it.
So I need to change that, too.
Yeah.
Or when we digitize them, just create a link to...
Are all of our lights LED now, or is...
City lights, no.
No.
What about new ones?
Okay.
For the most part, they are, yeah. We don't, but, right, our current standards don't require it. They just say, streetlights are required. It doesn't really give any detail to, to what we want.
Do we want to specify the spectrum of light if we're going to go LED, because there's lots of ranges out there?
We're actually going through that right now. I never realized how complicated that is. We're actually working with LCRA, who we buy our power from, to help us get some clearer standards, because it all comes down to the spacing and, and what you're reflecting light off of. You know, if it's a concrete street, it reflects differently, so we're working on a better standard.
Well, was that actually, you just kind of led on to the next ones down there, which is, lights installed mid-block every two hundred feet? Every five car lengths?
And that's to get a, a continuous level of lighting.
Perfections.
You know, the HUD standards is like one every eight hundred feet, and you end up with a bright spot and a dark spot, and a bright spot and a dark spot. The two hundred feet gives you a constant level of lighting. Now, with the LED, there's a little bit more flexibility.
The best example I can think of that is that trail system right off of, from the airport out to...
Yeah.
Not, not that many people use it, but that, when you drive there through night, you could walk that whole length and never be in a dark spot.
Is that what we want to have on our streets?
Well, those LED lights, they are so cool because you can, most of those fixtures, you can actually get in and adjust how much it spreads out and how bright it is. And so, you really have a lot of options when it comes to it.
Richard, I get what you're, I get what you're thinking, I think it's just like, you stand at your driveway, you have a bright...
No dark sky. I'm sorry, Hunter's Crossing right now, I love because it only has lights at the street corner, thank you very much. I've been in neighborhoods where you walk down the street, you see people fricking poles, and it's just, it's daylight there all the time. It's like, why do we want it daylight there all the time?
And you can jump out from the bushes and...
Well, we're trying to emphasize, like, correctly, our mom, you know, people getting out, using sidewalks, using less vehicles, stuff like that, other modes of transportation. So I would think that the, the streetlight part of it would be the same, you know, that we don't have dark spots where we have crime, or, you know, somebody falls down, you can't see them, stuff like that. I mean, that's my, that's, that's my thought.
Is there any provision for solar on lighting? Or incentives for solar?
No, we don't have any incentives. The promise laws, you still have batteries, and they have to be maintained.
And see, the other thing is, the other thing I was thinking of is, is maintenance costs. Yes, LED lights are cheaper, but you still got to pay for the power lights, and maybe opening up two hundred feet, I'll maybe with LEDs. It's just, I have an inversion to walking down the streets and seeing them light up like it's daylight, and I'm just like, guys, it's nighttime. The intersection, I understand, and we need them.
Lots of policy issue, you're weighing traffic safety and crime, which...
Yeah.
Where did, where did, where did two hundred feet come from? Is that a, is there, is there a standard, or is there something else?
That is actually calculating the maximum distance with a thirty-foot or twenty-foot high hole at that lumen to get a constant one lumen level.
And do, I mean, that must be an incredibly technical question, but do we have an idea in layman's terms of how dark it is, you know, right in the middle, or it's at the end? My, my, my thought would be if we can spread it out where there's still enough light to see somebody walking, or, you know, but not enough light where, you know, you could like, you know, drop a penny and still find it in the dark, right? So, I would assume there's some medium there where we could have enough light that people can get out and use the sidewalks at night, be comfortable, feel safe without, you know...
But we're talking, you're talking about all the poles, like, I think about the installation by the airport, those are the little, little three-foot high that shine down. So I'd imagine, you know, you, you see the pathway quite nicely, but up above it where you kind of, still can take in that dark sky.
Especially at the airport, that's one of the darkest. Yeah, then you get into your light frequencies, you know, you've got mercury vapor, the very white light, then you've got your high-pressure sodiums, which is more into that brown spectrum. So you've got two different light levels in there.
Your nerd level.
The brown level's more of the white side.
You just went over Wesley's head.
That's way above my nerd level, huh?
What kind of defines where you change from mercury vapors, it's kind of a blue, to low-pressure sodium, which is a yellow, and people don't like it.
Oh, yeah, the yellow ones are ugly. I lived in Saddle Z when they did that, it's ugly.
My, my only, my only opinion is this, is that if we're, if we're, if this, if one of the moving forces of our comprehensive plan and the rewrite of this is that we're trying to get pedestrians out, we're trying to get people talking to their neighbors, get them out, walk around, ride bikes, it's only fair to give those same people enough light to be safe. And while I may not, we're worried about walking a dark street, or you might, Debbie might, or my wife might, or my kids might.
And when you live on a street that's asphalt, and black, and you don't, and your, your lights are spaced, you know, further than that?
You're talking about the streetlights in Bastrop that go off and on all the time?
Those are the red lights.
Random working lights.
Even walking like three houses in between my house and where the street light is, it's dark spots.
So, if there's, if you or future you, you know, if there's a, if there's a medium where we can spread those out, I agree, as long as we're maintaining some type of minimum light where it's, it's usable light, you know?
I wonder if there's a way to define the...
I think on top of our poles, does make a bit of options. What is short ones, that you're riding the walkway, the pathway, not necessarily just the house.
Well, so we could do like twelve-foot poles, but then they have to be more frequent, right? I mean, is that, so maybe put in there an alternative light?
They're like twelve-foot, but they're lower, and they're fancy and everything. Yeah, they're, they're much closer together, but they're doing that for an aesthetics approach.
But if you've seen those, does that fit with your idea of, of not having too much light?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you look downtown, you've got those architectural poles, and they light up the whole downtown area very nicely.
Some of them don't work right now.
But it, versus, versus just the big massive white streetlights.
They should put LEDs in the concrete sidewalk?
Little strobe lights.
I don't like any of the...
Like the grocery store, when you walk by the frozen section.
I understand what you're trying to say about, about, you know, getting people outside, about security. We probably need to play with this some more and see what, what's out there. Maybe we play with lights at a distance or something, so we accomplish these two objectives.
I'd rather have more light.
I'm assuming you're not a member of the illumination engineering system?
No, but I know somebody who would come in and do a two-hour workshop, just to...
That'd really confuse.
So, is that, Madam Chairman, that's the end?
Wow. Congratu, huh?
Can I say one thing really quick?
Absolutely.
Just kind of going back, it was kind of...
You want to go back to section one?
No, I just, it was brought to my attention today, I didn't quite realize it had been taken out of the ordinance, but as far as the plating ordinance in the city, there used to be a provision in the ordinance that was said that anything, in its current property configuration, if it was broken prior to nineteen eighty-one, which was when the state passed the state plating ordinance, that it was considered...
Hold on, wait a second, that wasn't a state, the state didn't pass a law, that's when the city adopted its first subdivision ordinance.
When the state passed it?
Well, the states had plating standards from nineteen eighty-nine.
Section one, section one-twenty-one, state municipal code. So the city adopted in nineteen eighty-one.
They adopted their first subdivision ordinance in nineteen eighty...
Okay. So, the city adopted in nineteen eighty-one. But anyway, the long and short of it is, I'm against removing it, but at the same time, the reason would be is that, you know, the downtown area was, most of it is non-platted. It's all property of record. In removing it, anyone who wanted to move a shed onto their property that required a permit from the city would be required to replat their property first. Any, any permit needed by the city would need to be replatted. And, you know, if that's where everyone wants to go, I mean, I guess that's fine, but I would guess that eighty, ninety percent of the properties downtown aren't platted, and a fair number of them were platted after nineteen eighty-one, which, you know, they would have to replat anyway. But, anyway, I just, you know, there's going to be a number of people, this will be affected, where, you know, a permit to put a shed on your property is twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars. Say you buy that, you know, five hundred dollar shed at Lowe's, you know, you could then be required to go and hire a surveyor for two, three thousand dollars to then replat your property. And so...
Wesley, we had that problem with that property we bought on Hazel Street, right across the art center. It was a mess and a disaster.
And so, anyway, I mean, it's, and... Yours was actually in the right of way, I think.
That too. Half the house.
The city would come out at wanting to clean up the records and just make everything easier, as we've said, you know, plats. To the homeowner, make no difference, because they own their land and they don't see it any different. You know, the city obviously sees it differently, that this somehow fixes X, Y, and Z problem, which I'm totally not aware of what those problems are. But, anyway, it's just, you know, it's going to be a huge tax on the homeowners, and essentially, you know, it's a good time to be a surveyor in the city of Bastrop, because they're already three, four months behind, and this will, you know, definitely make sure they have to work for years to come.
My opinion would be that, when you balance the, the private property interest versus, you know, the greater good interest, that, that I agree that going forward, having platted properties, knowing where our utilities exist, knowing where, you know, easements exist that we don't, you know, we weren't aware of before, I think starting to get a better record of those, especially in the downtown area, as we go forward, because whether people agree with it or not, at some point, some of the stuff in downtown's going to start going away, and new stuff's going to start popping up. It may not be in the next ten years or twenty years, but at some point, some stuff's going to go, and I just think, moving forward, it's in the greater interest of everybody in the city to have a better idea of where things at.
I feel that in a, and I completely understand that, and I just feel that, in a way, it's going to discourage a lot of homeowners develop, redeveloping their property. You know, you want to do an electrical update, that needs a permit, you need to plat. You want to redo your roof, that needs a permit, you need to plat. You know, it, it keeps you from developing property, unless the city changes what they want to require in order to have to replat. You know, like, before we talked about, you know, major structural changes, additions, stuff like that, you know, but as it currently sits, any, the city can't, the city can't issue any permit to a homeowner unless they have a legal lot of record. So basically, you know, most of these are non-legal lots, as far as the city would see them, and it's only going to be a legal lot once it's platted. Even, even though the property that existed since nineteen eighty-one, or since, since eighteen ninety, you know, you know, eighteen fifty in some cases, when, you know, the city had bashed up, this kind of thing going.
So, could we, could we make this a item for a future agenda?
Absolutely. I just wanted to bring it up.
Where we can, maybe we...
Let everyone gather, let everyone gather information on it.
Where we can, where we can talk about it, because that's going to be a recommendation from us, the city council will change the zoning.
No, this is part of the subdivision law.
This is where, this is where it's always been.
Something, what you'd like to see, maybe there's, there's a threshold, there's a threshold...
I mean, honestly, I've been through on both sides, and I've replatted property for what I see as relatively useless reasons, and I've done it, and, I mean, it's not bad, it's not a horrible process, but at the same time, you know...
It could be costly, two, three thousand dollars.
You know, I, I had, I had the money to pay for it as well, you know, and, but, you know, it delayed things by six months, and it was an aggravation.
So just to clarify, if, if you need a permit for something, that's contained inside our subdivision ordinance currently?
The way this is written is, we will not issue a building permit unless the property is properly platted.
Which is actually part of another state law that requires a, requires a plat for us to hook utilities up to your property.
I think probably the answer is to find some threshold which would trigger the plating. Sheds that are the issue, and somehow, but...
Well, that was my issue, but yeah.
Yeah, we, we got to decide, is it okay to, you know, if you don't expand your house by twenty-five percent or by, you know, four hundred square feet, does that trigger the plating?
Well, absolutely, but I...
We have another meeting at the end of the month, right? So, there's a, there's a new item to discuss in the morning, because we won't be here for another hour.
For hours.
I want to, I want to thank our planning department, our engineer, Dave, Jennifer, all of Viviana, all the support staff, you've done an amazing job. And I want to thank this commission for being here since, it's now, what, nine seventeen, nine eighteen?